Great. The November 8th, 2023 meeting of the Open Space Board of Trustees is called to order. I want to welcome all the board members and staff and public who are participating. You have many other options this evening, including the Republican Presidential Candidate Debate. So we appreciate your interest in working with us instead of that. So thank you for that. I'll do the roll call now. Michelle?
Here.
Brady?
Here.
John? John?
Can you hear me?
I'm here too.
We have a quorum and the entire board is here. And thank you for that. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 11th Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. I do not. Please do that. It'd be good reminder for me anyway.
Okay, sorry about that. Just getting the meeting rules up here. Okay, so the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit the website that's linked here. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revise Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Absurdity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. I don't see anyone online on the phone, so I'll just go over the instructions here. If you would like to speak and you haven't signed up in advance to speak during any of the public comment sections. So you'll either see a little icon for participants at the bottom. You can click on that and then you'll see the three dots at the bottom. You can click on the raise hand function and it'll raise your hand. You may also just see raise hand at the bottom. And if I see anyone joined by phone, I'll just go over those instructions when we get there. And that should conclude the rules.
Great, thank you. Now we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 11th, 2023. Does anyone have any comments or edits on the first page? See, none. How about page two? Any comments or edits on that? I have a couple. Under the middle part of the page spillway flood, flood wall paragraph. I thought the first sentence was a little confusing. So here's my suggestion on making what I think is clearer. And I can certainly be told that I'm misreading this or misunderstanding. My suggestion is for the first sentence, the board asks if the backfilling on the downstream side of Highway 36 will allow for spill over from. I thought we were talking about floodwater overtopping the dam. And so that would be my suggestion for completing that first sentence. And then the second sentence, the board asked if material from the excavation and removal of the levee could be used as backfill for the flood wall, which I I am remembering was the conversation. So if I am misremembering, please let me know. But it was a little confusing for me because the sentence reads spill over from excavation and removal of the levee. And I don't think that's what we were talking about. We were talking about the overtopping of the dam and the, you know, kind of on the backside of the flood wall, as I remember. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I think both, both subjects were raised, right? Spill over and then, but I think specifically this is mainly going to, is there, are we going to be able to reuse the material of the levee? Right? And that part of that is it could be used to backfill the downstream side of the flood wall.
Do you find my suggestions to be clearer?
Yeah, this, I agree, this sounds confusing.
Any other thoughts on that?
I think it does sound confusing, Dave. What was your suggestion again?
My suggestion was for the first sentence, the board asked if the backfilling on the downstream side of Highway 36. So I'm seeing that on, you know, on the east side of the flood wall between the flood wall and the highway will allow for spill over from floodwater overtopping the dam. We talked about, Brady, I think you about eroding on the downstream side.
Yeah.
And my thought was that would it be eroding from overtopping the dam?
Right. That was the question that I asked. You know, I'd ask two questions. One about would they be able to do some of that backfilling with spoils? And they, they answered that there were, the project was actually net negative and they were going to have to import fill in. So that wasn't necessarily where the spoils would have to go.
Right.
And the other was that the velocity over that wall wasn't going to be high enough to scour the backfill.
So that's what I thought would be clear on that. And then as far as using the material from the levee, we would say the board asked if material from the excavation or removal of levee could be used as backfill for the flood wall.
That makes sense.
I think if everyone agrees, that makes it a little clearer. Great. Are there, are there any other suggestions or comments on page two? And page three, any suggestions or comments? I have two, Leah, and one of them is going to be somewhat extensive. I apologize for. But the first shorter one is on the next steps. So the first paragraph reads, Dave asked if the timing for a possible disposal be added to the project time to include more detail and clarity around the OSMP elements. I put, I think what I put in the project timeline, which is what I was trying to say, that the timeline should reflect, you know, more substantive detail for whatever the board or the open space issues were. So that was my first suggestion. The second one is a little more extensive and that goes to our conversation on the permits and the disposal action by the board. So here's my suggested additions to that, which would be then the next paragraph under next steps. The, so the board asked about the status of the city, state, and federal permits in relation to the timing of the requested or the request for board action on the disposal of OSMP land for the flood mitigation project. Dave said his preference that requisite permits be acquired by the city or at least be in the final permit approval process prior to the boards considering the request for disposal of the open space mountain parks lands. Dan said that a disposal action could be conditional. That is conditioned on the final approval of all required permits. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments on those suggestions?
No, I recall that being the conversation.
Brady, you look like you're ready.
I'm trying to parse this out and see if there's a little gotcha in there somewhere. I mean, we, I remember the discussion about this and we talked about timeline and then and reversionary deeds being, you know, kind of a allegory. Anyway, is this going to materially change anything? This, this is, I guess, excuse me. Is this going to change the direction as you see it by making this edit? Is this going to change the direction that we as a board have given to the staff?
I don't believe so, but my suggestion is that the written record reflect that conversation since the disposal issue is kind of paramount in kind of our conduct of business in moving ahead. So I thought that, you know, that we ought to at least reflect that conversation as it relates to what our consideration will be in the future.
Well, I guess the only other, another material thing is I recollected and I'd have to go back and watch the video, which I'd probably prefer not to do frankly, but to get it just right is that the project essentially becomes untenable if we have to wait for all the permits to clear before doing disposal. You know, it just, my recollection of our discussion was that, because some people from the public called in and said, hey, get all the permits before you dispose. And when we took a look at the project timeline and all the various elements that have to happen in succession, that that is not tenable, given the project. And so that is a material part of this element of the project. So I would say if, if we're going to add that you made that request and that we talked about the reversionary nature of it. I mean, maybe we, maybe the minutes also reflect that.
Yeah, I am less in agreement on, on that observation. Brady, because my recollection of the conversation was that while the, all of the permits may not be secured or approved by the time that the disposal issue was paramount, that there would definitely be an effort to get as much of the permitting done as possible before that action was considered. And so that's why I, I remember saying that I said, well, at least be in the final permitting process. So there was some notion that, you know, the approval would be forthcoming. So not necessarily that the approval was, was final, but that at least it looked like, you know, it was it was on schedule for that. And then Dan then weighed in with the conditional component that we could make the decision conditional upon final approval. Michelle?
I've got two microphones to choose from.
Neither of them are on.
Yeah. I, the way you just described it, Dave, is consistent with how I think the conversation went, that you wanted to see the, as much of the permits approved as far as we could take it before we did actually dispose, but also knowing that, that what, it wasn't going to be possible. And if we were going to be asked the disposal question and be, and go through the disposal proceedings, at least our part of it, that we could go ahead and do that while you're still here, Dave. But have some clawback mechanisms in, you know, conditions.
Right. Yeah, I, so I guess I'm not entirely wedded to this language or verbiage. But I do think we ought to, in the minutes, reflect that we had that, we had the conversation related to permitting and disposal. That, that they were related. And the timing might be a factor as far as, you know, kind of finalizing both of those actions or all of those actions. But anyway, I just thought we could be a little clearer on kind of what we see as kind of the next steps. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have, this is the, yeah, I didn't come. We have such an extensive discussion about the minutes. So yeah, as long as we're not kind of, I just don't want us to go, go back to, to this issue. I don't want to, you know, clarifying the minutes isn't to relitigate the issue, right? And so, yeah, I don't, I guess I don't feel strongly about it. But like I said, my, my, my recollections are that there were some public comment that were in line with what you wanted, I think, which is that the permits either are finalized or are as, as close to being final as possible. And that, you know, given all the other moving parts of this project, it was suboptimal in some cases to, to ensure that all the permits are cleared. And so if you're wanting to just sort of add that emphasis in the minutes, make sure that's recorded. I'm comfortable with that as long as it doesn't materially change the message that this board is sending to the staff.
We could add a sentence, and now I'm going off the top of my head, but say something to the effect that since all the permits might not be finalized by the time of the disposal decision, then we can go into the, Dan suggested, or Dan said that disposal action would require or what could be a condition. Would that, would that be better?
Yeah, I think that's agreeable. And I think I would go so far as to say, we know that some of the permits are not going to be done in time for disposal. At least that was the message I got at the meeting.
So how confused are you, Leah? What, what, what can we do? I can give you this language and actually I'll add another sentence to what John and Brady just suggested and say basically the, not all the permits will be final at the time of the disposal decision. And
If you could just state whatever portion of your initial statement and what you're adding generally speaking, so it's on the record and then send me the language.
Okay.
You could just restate the additional language that you would like to see, the second piece of additional language? Just so it's all in one place in the minutes for, or in the tape for Leah.
Okay. So let me take a stab at that. The board asked about the status of the city, state, and federal permits in relation to the timing of the request for board action on the disposal of OSMP land for the flood mitigation project. Since, let me amend what I initially said is since the, since all of the permits may not be finalized by, or may not be approved by the time of the disposal action by the board. Dan suggested that a disposal action could be conditional. That is conditioned on the final approval of all required permits. Is that?
That's clear. Yeah, that's good. Yep, thanks.
You okay with that? Okay. Great. Any other comments or suggestions on the minutes? See, none. We'll take a roll call vote for approval. Michelle?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Harmon?
Yes.
The minutes passed unanimously. Michelle moved it. She did it. She whispered in my
I moved it.
Thank you for that. Michelle, yes, actually, yeah, Michelle moved and I seconded it.
Nice.
Getting ahead of myself. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment for items not identified for a public hearing. And there are no items on tonight's agenda identified for a public hearing. So if you wish to speak to any of the items that we will be considered at this, considering at this meeting, now is the time to do that.
Yes, thank you. And we do have seven speakers signed up to speak in advance. So we'll start with those seven speakers and then we'll move on to anyone who has their hand raised. So just a reminder, you can either click the hand raise function at the bottom or you can click on participants, the three dots, and then raise your hand. So we'll start with David Olskam, followed by Paula Schuler and then Elizabeth Black. David, you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Great. Thanks for having me. I only recently moved back to Boulder, so please excuse me if these two matters relating to voice and site program have been previously discussed. First matter is DocuPet. Boulder uses DocuPet for pet licensing and voice and site registration. From my own experience, it's quite challenging to navigate the actual licensing functionality, given how much of the site is devoted to selling novelty, or as they put it, designer pet tags. If you haven't recently, please take a look at the site and decide for yourself whether the commercial nature of the site is appropriate for Boulder's licensing portal. Number two, voice and site enforcement. I love the voice and site area at Dry Creek and I've had great experiences there, even though the voice and site program is largely an honor system with no in-person training or testing. Based on recent conversations with staff, my understanding is that rangers on patrol there have been stopping everyone with an off-leash dog, unless the ranger and dog are close enough for the ranger to visually identify a voice and site tag. I would ask the board to examine whether that practice, potentially stopping nearly every visitor, complies with the Fourth Amendment, Colorado's informed consent law under Article Three of Title 16 and Boulder's new reimagine policing plan. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Sorry about that. Okay, so next we have Paula Schuler, followed by Elizabeth Black and then Jonathan Moore. So Paula, you should be able to unmute yourself now. And Paula, I just sent a message to ask you to unmute. Do that one more time. Okay. And Paula, we may come back to you after the next speaker, just in case there is an issue with technology. Feel free to message me and the Q and A and I am happy to help with any technical issues. So we'll move on to Elizabeth Black, then we'll go back to Paula Schuler and then Jonathan Moore. So Elizabeth Black, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Elizabeth Black, 4340 North 13th Street. Over the last four years, Heal has given you tons of information, including research findings on the damage by Boulder's prairie dogs to local ecosystems, the numbers of your prairie dogs neighbors are killing and their costs to do so, a virtual driving tour of your degraded fields found at healboulder.org, a cost comparison of yours and the county's prairie dog control expenses, photos and videos of dust storms showing severe soil erosion on your lands, private walking and car tours of your prairie dog occupied lands, hundreds of letters and testimonies from your neighbors, and finally, a poll of your neighbors showing how to improve relations. So you can understand why we are disappointed with staff's memo on neighbor relations. Your neighbors say that to improve relations as well as your severe soil erosion and degraded ag lands, you need to increase the pace of your prairie dog removals, take care of your weeds, and improve your irrigation practices. To do this, you need more worker bees, more boots on the ground out in the fields, not sitting in their offices. I have heard that your board can't interfere with staff's management and can't tell them to remove prairie dogs, more prairie dogs, or hire more people, that it would work better if Heal gives you specific recommendations like a weed control program or modifications to the barrier cost sharing pilot. So accordingly, we ask you to incorporate shared barrier maintenance and a materials labor cost split into your barrier pilot, modeling yours on the county's successful program. But you know, this is just tinkering around the edges. A fancy weed control program is just dust in the wind, literally, if prairie dogs aren't removed from a property first. There are boku weeds on your land because they are the only thing prairie dogs don't eat. If you mow weeds without removing prairie dogs, your soil will just erode faster and only more weeds will grow. With limited budgets and manpower, you must be strategic and efficient. That means you must remove prairie dogs from a field before spending on weed control and remediation. So we're back at the same place, remove more prairie dogs, hire more worker bees. I have struggled with this. I wish I could give you some nice little fix it, but I can't change facts. To really improve neighbor relations as well as your degraded lands, you need to increase the pace of your prairie dog removals, take care of your weeds, and improve your irrigation practices. To do that, you need more boots on the ground out in your fields, not sitting in their offices. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. And we're going to go back to Paula Schuler, followed by Jonathan Moore and then Daniel Moore. And Paula, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Oh, I apologize. Let me try one more time.
Is that working?
Give me one more second. I apologize.
Okay.
That was my fault. So Paula, I will try that one more time. Okay, sorry about that, Paula. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Is, is that working?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, you didn't want me as a panelist?
No, I'm sorry about that. That was my fault. I was mid doing that for other folks.
Okay, no problem. I'm, this is a, I'm traveling, so this is a new thing for me too. So, all right. Good evening, trustees and staff. Most of you already know me, but for those new board members, I'm Paula Schuler. We farm over 200 acres of land in Boulder County. We farm mostly private property and I have been asking OSMP to be a better neighbor for many, many years. I read staff's write-up for the meeting and I must say that I'm disappointed and disheartened by the entire memo. Respectfully, I feel it's just a bunch of what I call jibber jabber. It's a lot of words, a lot of excuses. At one point, it passes the buck to the lessies and the section on what does being a good neighbor mean is complete irony. Sadly, the memo contains no new actions that will make a difference. The barrier cost share program is almost four years overdue, so I have a hard time getting too excited about something that should have been going on for the last three years. Tracking neighbor contacts, mailing more postcards, and talking more does not make OSMP a good neighbor. The Heal group is very concerned about healthy ecosystems and the preservation of agricultural lands. Heal conducted a poll and gave staff specific sound recommendations from our members who are producers, neighbors, and concerned citizens in Boulder County to help OSMP be a better neighbor. The top two recommendations from the poll were increase the number of acres of lethal control and routinely clear all noxious weeds on OSMP agricultural properties before weed seeds set. Those two actions will absolutely make a difference, but there is nothing approaching those suggestions in the memo. Heal is trying to be helpful. We try to be part of the conversation and provide staff with an informative poll with solid, realistic suggestions, but it appears that it has fallen on deaf ears. Why is that? Once again, it seems to be about the prairie dog, not the truly sacred irrigated ag lands. To me, it seems that staff is absolutely resistant to ramping up the program to remove the prairie dogs and restore the ag lands. I just don't understand. There have been incredible successes regenerating and healing these parcels, restoring production and increasing carbon sequestration, yet the pace remains glacial. The faster OSMP restores their ag lands, the faster OSMP becomes a good neighbor to many, many people. I'm completely perplexed. What about the recommendation to remove noxious weeds by something as simple as mowing before seeds set? And sometimes that means mowing multiple times a year, as I know from experience. This is a very logical and necessary action for OSMP. This is a very logical and necessary action for OSMP, something that could be incorporated and would be a huge difference to neighbors. Weeds travel in the wind as well as down the ditches, yet the two, prairie dogs and weeds, are tied together. To truly get rid of the weeds, OSMP needs to remove the prairie dogs. Private landowners in the county continue to spend hundreds and thousands of dollars managing weeds and killing prairie dogs coming from open space. Staff has said that views and values around prairie dog management vary greatly in the community, but the bottom line is that no private property owner wants prairie dogs, and no private property owner wants noxious weeds. I think staff needs to do more than just send out more postcards. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
And next, we have Jonathan Moore, who I don't see on right now. So Jonathan, if you are on, you can just send a message in the Q and A, and I will make sure to put you back on the list. So Daniel Moore, followed by Robert Murphy, and then Leslie Hitchcock Cushman. So we'll start with Daniel Moore. And Daniel, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Great. Lynn, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, excellent. My name is Dan Moore. My wife and I live at fifty-fifty Nywhatt Road. Our property orders Axelson Open Space and the prairie dog colony south of us. Certainly support the comments of Elizabeth and Paula, who preceded me. And I have to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to have to speak with the Open Space Board of Trustees and members of the staff who may be online or present. We have met with the OSMP staff for many times since 2018 concerning the prairie dog issue. When we first took ownership of this land, it was estimated that we had twenty-five hundred active burrows on our land, which was about six hundred mating pairs of prairie dogs. So we had a fairly significant issue that we've been working on for a while. I agree with all of the previous comments, but I have to say I'm happy that that a Barrier Cost Share Pilot Program for 2024 is on the way. And so that's great, and my compliments to the members of the staff who have worked hard to bring it to this point. The subject of cost share and other parts of that probably will be discussed at another time, but happy that we've gotten to that point. I'd like to spend just a moment touching on a more holistic item, and I promise to keep it brief. It has to do with the control of prairie dogs from a holistic standpoint. For my wife and I, you know, we think that prairie dogs are definitely, you know, a key part of the ecosystem, and they're cute animals, but they are incredibly prolific. And I would draw the committee's attention to a study done at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln in nineteen eighty-six, Crosby and Graham. Page one hundred and fourteen, it states that a prairie dog colony will approximately double, its population will double in a year, and that reductions of up to fifty-five percent of the population are necessary to maintain a static level. Given that the county, city and county want to have a manageable population, I think that that, the work that was done there to come up with these figures might be valuable in future decision-making. And that concludes my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel.
Okay, and then next, we have Jonathan Moore. Jonathan, I don't see you on the list. So again, if you are on, please just send a message in the Q and A, and I can make sure that you have the ability to talk. Robert Murphy, who I also don't see on the list. So again, if you are on Robert Murphy, just send me a message in the Q and A. And then Leslie Hitchcock Cushman. And I believe that is L on this list. So L, you should be able to unmute yourself.
All right, am I on?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Again, I don't know why I'm so nervous. I'm a big talker. I haven't talked in a while here, but so I wanted to address that with the barrier thing and with the barrier conversation, it's obvious that this prairie dog situation and weed situation has created a bit of a nuisance for the neighbors, as well as the producers. And some, I emailed you some of my analysis that I'd given to the county and then to you about tonight's topic, but some of the things I didn't include were there quite a bit of laws that agriculture is not a nuisance in Title Thirty-five as well. And it goes on to say that any municipality or local government that makes an ordinance that makes agriculture a nuisance is void, which I will send you after this for your view. But the one thing that we have not touched on whatsoever is the image of the producers and the losses to them. And these are our legacy families that have cared for these lands for a hundred and sixty years. And what an embarrassment, an egg on their face that this is, they have to say these are the properties they manage for newcomers to this community. It's, but their losses are what's more astonishing and really haven't ever been talked about that much in numbers, even when we were on the prairie dog working group. Just Brubaker, for an example, my husband used to run eighty calves, right? He'd be able to run eighty calves on that field. Due to the loss of grazing from prairie dogs, he now ran forty calves this year, which with today's cattle prices is a loss of nearly sixty thousand dollars. That's one year, one crop. We recently were featured on a national ranching program showcasing our, his feed efficiency genetics that he's been building in his herd for the last ten years as really probably the world's first environmentally friendly cattle. And I'll send you that link. I can't believe I hadn't, but that's just one producer, one season. This program has been going on for decades. Their losses, each producers are in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands, if not millions, in the losses to the state up and down the front range by this prairie dog recommendations of the city of Boulder being implemented in other cities and communities across it are in the billions to the state. The FDA is the one who is in charge of that prairie dog relocation permit, and it is due to monkeypox and vector disease that prairie dogs carry. And I really do hope that we can have future talks, or at least you'll have future talks with your advisors on what the legalities of these policies are. Thank you.
Thank you, L.
Okay, we're going to go back to Bob Murphy. And Bob, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. My name is Bob Murphy. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I live at forty-seventy-five fifty-seventh street, which is between the airport going north to J Road. I butt up against McKenzie Property, which is owned by Open Space. I've lived here for thirty-three years, and over those thirty-three years, I've just seen the degrading quality of the land on the McKenzie Property. It used to be lush pasture land. That sombrero ranch used to have their horses on during the winter, and now it's a moonscape with hundreds of prairie dog colonies. And this has caused numerous problems for us in regards to trying to mitigate the prairie dogs coming down to our pastures and causing problems with our horses, danger to them. March thirty-first, many of us experienced, you know, dust storms when there were high winds, and we ended up with our irrigation ditches completely filled with topsoil, which is, you know, environmentally is a disaster. I read the Open Space response to the landowners, and I'm in full agreement. You contact them, and they respond right away. They're polite as can be, but being polite does not make you a good neighbor. And I have to say that Open Space are bad neighbors now. They will not do things to mitigate the damages that's being done. The McKenzie Property used to be very lush, and they have a lot of the water rights off the white rock ditch that runs along the Cottonwood Trail there, but that land has not been irrigated in probably two decades. And when I talk to Open Space about it, they're like, well, we just don't have enough people. And what I would say is, Open Space needs to stop buying land. I'm a big supporter of Open Space, but they need to stop buying land and start spending their money on personnel and whatever they have to do to get people to work on the land and to take care of things, because, you know, being polite is not being a good neighbor. I'm sorry, and I just wish that you would do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, and I still don't see Jonathan Moore. Jonathan, if you are on, please just message me in the Q and A, and we'll move on to hands. And I see one hand from Lynn Siegel. Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, that last guy was saying he wants money. Well, guess what? We're, we're deficit in money with Open Space. Y'all know that. Oh, we're not in deficit, John? We're not? Hmm, that's what I've heard. And if, if not, we will be when CU South is developed. And we will be at the rate that we are developing wealth and equity in this community. We will be, most definitely. And this is a problem because the developers aren't paying their way. Now, I've lived here since nineteen eighty-seven, before you were born, probably, John, and I had my first occasion to vote against Open Space funding yesterday. And I felt really bad about that, but I feel good in the sense that I'm not paying the bill anymore. Let the developers pay. And I don't hear you folks complaining at planning board. And I see you firing Caroline Miller, who speaks truth to power about CU South. So far as the permits, I don't do things on my place until I have all my ducks in a row. And I think you need every assurance that your permits are going to go through before you proceed on this, because we are spending piles of my money on CU South when it's probably not even going to happen, because once you guys approve the Open Space disposal, guess what? There's sixty days for the citizens to get together and get a ballot measure to reverse your approval. Now, there's impacts from prairie dogs people have spoken of tonight. The more we grow our population, the more we sprawl out and spread out, and even if we densify, we are having a large impact on the land. And the prairie dogs take the brunt of it. And I love prairie dogs, and I don't want to hear these people coming on here talking about getting rid of them because I think it's our fault that we're overpopulating. And what you need to be doing, instead of legislating things that happen within Open Space, and all the money that has to go behind it, that John seems to feel, there is no problem with the money to do maintenance and operations and to buy as much as we want. I know that's not true. I've been watching this for, you know, since nineteen eighty-seven. We need money.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, and I am not seeing any other hands. So I think that that concludes our public comment section.
Great, thanks. We'll bring it back to staff and board. Dan, do you want to respond to any of the public comment before the board comments?
Sure, just a couple of things about some of the comments from adjacent neighbors to Open Space. One is just to remind community members that on December eleventh at six P M., we will be having a meeting in which we will be daylighting all of, well, a lot of our activities over 2023 in regards to prairie dog management and the restoration of irrigation, irrigated agricultural fields. We will also be daylighting staff's approach to 2024. And, and we will be having a comment period for that night, as well as a week after that meeting, and inviting community members to comment on our approaches, our approach plans for the following year, which will include a number of different management strategies, removal of prairie dogs, restoration of agricultural fields, water infrastructure, fencing, all those type of things. So that's, that's a big night, and we encourage those who are already participating and those who may not know about this meeting to look at that as an opportunity to provide staff comments. We will then come back to the board in quarter one and daylight our plans for prairie dog management to the board, and, and and that will be another opportunity for this board to engage at sort of the management day-to-day level. In terms of get out of the office and get out in the field, just want to point out to this board, who may not have straddled over the past five years of, of all the activities that have been going on on prairie dog management. Just a reminder that the prairie dog working group was a big staff-led effort in which we brought together a lot of different community members, a lot of different viewpoints on prairie dog management, and that was a big, robust, two-year engagement window. We then led an effort to approach board and council in 2019 to actually put more management tools for our prairie dog management program in place. That was the start for the first time for the city to look at lethal control and a number of different other elements that went into our preferred alternative. It was also staff's doing earlier this year to decide to take a look at that. After three years, is it working? And we actually sought guidance and approval to move our prairie dog management program with that whole toolbox system-wide on our irrigated agricultural lands, not just within a specific area of Open Space. So from that perspective, at the policy level and at the guidance level, I feel like staff over the past five years has, has really been generating a lot of community engagement, a lot of board involvement, a lot of council involvement on trying to get the tools we feel like we need to begin to make a difference out on the land. And just want to point out that over the last few years, our prairie dog management has greatly affected in a positive way nearly one hundred adjacent property owners for those owners that did desire a reduction of prairie dogs in their area. Other things that have happened, and I'm not here to relitigate Open Space policy, but in terms of manage, on the management side, we hired our first soil health specialist to help with the prairie dog management restoration program. We actually created for the first time and, and have beefed up even in this year and this coming year, our ecological, agricultural ecological restoration program, something brand new we put in in 2020 to come in after prairie dog removals to help restore the lands and bring them back to health with the goal of, you know, the return viable agricultural to those lands. We've hired more additional staff in our water infrastructure program by hiring a water technician just this year. We are starting a barrier cost-sharing program. We have started a community meeting that I just referenced in 2020, so we've been holding that for about four or five years now. We started a coexistence program. In fact, we met with Paula Schuler and some others out on site, and it's a community collaborative on how we could start to have, see what ways we could have agricultural on our lands and still do agriculture in the presence of prairie dogs, which is sort of a novel innovative program that staff is very intensely involved with. So, you know, that just is, is a snippet of that we're not just in front of our computers in the office. We're very much out in the field doing good work. I realize and I sympathize with landowners who feel like the pace is not big enough, and I'm not here to review or refute whether the pace is or is not robust enough, but I would venture to say that there isn't another program area in our relationship to managing a species in Open Space that receives more attention and more funding than prairie dogs, so.
Dan, can you take a second and talk about the funding levels? And especially over the, the past, you know, four or five years, as far as what funds are directed specifically toward prairie dog management?
Uh, I don't have it at the top of my fingers. Heather Swanson is, um, is, is present tonight, and she'll also be part of one of our matters in the department. So Heather, I don't know if you have that at your fingertips either, but it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. I could certainly provide the board when we come back to you in quarter one with an, an idea of what we spent annually over the last four or five years since we've had that new management tool in our toolbox and give you a, a, a sense of what twenty twenty-four looks like within the approved budget. And again, prairie dog management hits on all things from, uh, removals, barriers, conservation, uh, soil health and, uh, uh, and, and the whole restoration program. So we've got pots of money all over, but we'd be happy to bring back the cumulative number for you, uh, when we come back to you in quarter one.
Okay, uh, before I bring it back to the board, I just wanted to ask, uh, do you have any thoughts on the um, gentleman who spoke about voice and sight and the DocuPet licensing, uh, issue and that sort of thing?
Well, DocuPet is a vendor that we've been using for the last several years before a customer would have to come to open space. Uh, for one aspect to get the voice and site take, then go to, uh, animal welfare or control over police to get other aspects of their dog licensing. And we heard a lot that that was cumbersome. So DocuPet is a company that we brought online that can handle all those services at once. Is it perfect? No. In fact, every year we look at, is there another, um, company that could approve upon, uh, what we're currently being serviced through DocuPet? So we realize it's not a panacea by any means, but it was an attempt and a successful attempt to a one-stop shop for customers rather than having to go to multiple different departments to get the tags they need to be able to have a voice and site tag, um, on the department, uh, uh, on open space. And in terms of the legality of being able to check for compliance, um, I don't feel comfortable speaking to that. I'm not so sure exactly what the issue is that he's raising. Uh, um, but I'm sure our rangers who are very well-trained, they go to academy, uh, they're, they're, uh, that uh, I have full faith in them that, uh, they're doing things according to the law, but.
Yeah, and I, I'll just observe that, um, you know, the checking of voice and site tag is certainly, uh, uh, ground, uh, foundation of the voice and site program. And, and so with the dogs off-leash, um, certainly the expectation is that, uh, rangers can uh, ask for, uh, uh, observation of, uh, the voice and site tag that's on the, on the dog, so.
I would add, like, all of them instructions say that that tag needs to be super visible on, on top of all the other tags, and not everybody does that. And it should be, as you're walking down, you should, it should be plain as day that that tag is there. So I think, um, being able to ask folks to, to make sure that's visible on a dog is fair. Um, I, I, I just use that service, DocuPet service to, to renew my tags, and I thought it was very easy to use. And yeah, they, they do want you to buy stuff, and I bought a glow-in-the-dark little thing to, so it doesn't rattle so much. Got a whole, like, other dollar or something like that. But so I, I, I think that they're, they're not perfect services, but it is way better than having to go to multiple departments to get your licenses and your voice and site tag. So, yeah, I, I, I think, um, it's a huge improvement.
So, uh, with that, I will bring it back to the board and, um, let's move on to matters from the board because I think, uh, if, if we do want to, uh, respond to any of the public comment on prairie dogs, um, that's also, uh, um, the memo that we can, uh, include in our comments. So, uh, let's do that. So, uh, the first, uh, item would be, do we have any thoughts on the comments we've heard on prairie dogs this evening as well as, um, the information in the memo of, in the board packet?
Yeah, I've got a, a, a comment or two. I, I, I want to thank Dan for going over all the, um, all the work and, and developments that staff have made over the last five years. I think it's good to remember that. I also think it bears mentioning that the city is proposing to take lethal control in-house. We bought perk machines or in the process of that, gonna have a full-time staffer next year. That'll probably be part of two full-time staffers working on this next year. And I have no doubt that the pace of that will not, um, uh, make all of our neighbors happy. And of course, hundred percent happy neighbors is probably not a realistic metric here. I will say I appreciate everybody that called in and, and I thought the comments were well-spoken. I think some people have got decades of experience. Um, the, these, these comments did not strike me as fly-off-the-handle sort of things that, uh, they, they seem well-reasoned. And, and I, I want to just acknowledge that, uh, your experience is real and, and, and we as a board, I think I speak for all of us, take it really seriously. Um, I'm pleased that the lethal control, we're making good progress. I think we're on pace to make reasonable progress for that next year. One question, Dan, I have, and if we can't answer this now, that's fine. It, it seems like, you know, people appreciate the cost-sharing program that, with the barriers. One thing I don't have a good handle on is the extent to which we are able to meet that requested goal of mowing weeds before they go to seed. And if that requires multiple, um, times mowing the same property. I mean, some people express the opinion that if you mow without removing your prairie dogs, it degrades the soil at a greater rate. I, I can't speak to that. But one thing it does occur to me is, is doing some kind of in-house calculation on our ability to attempt to meet that request, which is to mow, uh, our properties before they go to seed, even if it means doing it multiple times. And the extent to which we may or may not have a staffing shortfall there, or we may or may not have that as one of our stated goals. And if we don't, is there a good reason why we don't? I think that would merit some internal, um, investigation and reporting back out to the public. Yeah, that's, I think that's, that's everything I have to say.
Great, thanks. Are there other comments, suggestions from the board? Let, let me, uh, add a couple then. Um, I do think, as Dan has mentioned, the, uh, December eleventh, public meeting, open house, um, is a particularly important meeting and, and I think that, um, if we can address, uh, some of the questions or issues tonight at that meeting, uh, that would be very helpful. And I think, uh, Brady's suggestion on weed control or question on weed control uh, would be a good one to at least, um, address, uh, you know, in, in general at, at a meeting like that. My, my concern is that we continue to have conversations, um, you know, with, uh, individual, um, landowners adjacent to open space and, and trying to figure out what is most effective as far as they are concerned, um, regarding our, our, our management efforts. And if we can, uh, highlight some of those yeah, at the December eleventh meeting, um, I think that would be good. And one example would be, as Brady was mentioning on, on weed control, if, if we've got a schedule or, um, you know, kind of a priority tiering or, or whatever of, of some of those management actions, if, if we can make sure it's clearly presented, um, to the public in that meeting and then specifically to adjacent landowners who will be affected or, or presumably benefit from that. Um, I think that would be, uh, ve- very helpful. Um, my, my sense is that there's a, a fair amount of frustration out there. And, um, we've got to figure out a, a way of, uh, of making the conversation or en- enabling the conversation to not only, um, you know, kind of get uh, out what some of the issues are, but become more effective as to, okay, how, how are we going to, uh, deal with these and, and address them? And um, again, I think the annual meeting is certainly a good, uh, opportunity for the public and especially for adjacent landowners to um, talk with staff and, and, uh, participate in, uh, deciding kind of how, how the management actions are going to, um, go forward in the, in the coming year and what lessons we've learned from the past year, so.
Dave, can I add one more thing to my comment? Excuse me. One other thing that occurred to me is that, um, and I was discussing with some other board members, it's like, wow, we've got nine hundred neighbors. That's, if you're gonna, if you're gonna talk to nine hundred people one-on-one, that's like two maybe, two extra F T Es. I don't know, you know, what, what's the pace that's reasonable there? And so is there a middle ground between an annual meeting where everybody's invited and, and one-on-one meetings? Like, could, you know, is, is there an opportunity to convene some of the neighbors in, in certain regions? I, I went to the, the barbecue that we held for our leasees. And I just have to say the energy there was great. People were, you know, breaking bread together, talking, um, and, and interacting in what I have to say was a very neighborly way. And so, you know, I guess I would just say, are there understanding that having individual relationships with nine hundred people is going to be really challenging? Are there ways, is, are there, is there some middle ground between an annual meeting and, and one-on-one conversations where we can start to establish a little bit more of that culture, the neighborly culture and, and, and be more accessible, uh, to discuss uh, our shared vision for these, for these lands as opposed to just kind of bickering at each other, which is, I think, where we're stuck in some ways right now.
Great, thanks for that. And I, I also think, and this is probably a question, Dan, for you at, you know, at maybe at the December open house, uh, you know, there, there, um, there are some questions about kind of our cooperative, uh, working with the county um, on the prairie dog management. And so I do think that it, uh, might behoove us to, you know, highlight, uh, some of the cooperative efforts that we are working with on the county and, and maybe identify if there's some other potential opportunities. Um, you know, what those are and kind of how, how those might, uh, be integrated into the work plan and things like that. Um, because, uh, from my perspective, uh, I think the, both the city open space and county open space staffs are, are working together, but I'm not sure that that is, uh, perceived um, as well as it could be in the, uh, larger community.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm just getting used to the, the way that we do our agenda. So we're not going to have any presentation on the, the prairie dogs. So this is the time to, to speak about this.
The written, uh, the written information, uh, we, there's not, uh, merit a presentation. So there's, uh, there's.
Well, I, I read the written materials with interest, and I, I also read the, um, materials that were sent in by our, um, ag neighbors. And, um, and I, I found that, um, you know, it's a, it's a tough problem. That's for sure. It's been around for a long time. And, uh, and I want to echo Brady in saying that I was really impressed with, um, with just, just how thoughtful um, the input was from, from our ag neighbors. And so, while I know that our staff does a great job and is, is working really hard on this matter, I also know that, you know, there's discontent, um, in, in the, uh, ag community about that and, and that there probably areas where we could do a better job. So, you know, I, I also echo what Brady said about looking for ways to get people together in more conducive forums or for, uh, um, for conversation, you know, maybe, uh, you know, multiple, first of all, I, I, the way I read it, there are three hundred and fifty neighbors and nine hundred parcels. So it's not as many people as Brady made it out to, to be.
I stand corrected.
And, and if we, you know, if you broke that up into, you know, thirty or say fifteen, you could have, you know, what does that work out to? Twenty-four focus groups per year of fifteen people each, you know, something where, where there, there's more of an opportunity to engage on a uh, one-on-one level. Um, and I don't, you know, I don't pretend to know what the answers are. I'm just hoping that, um, you know, we all work to maintain this dialogue together, um, and, and listen to each other for good ideas. Um, I get fascinated by things like, um, prairie restoration. You know, the prairie dogs didn't really live in prairie grasses, which is kind of ironic because they were too, too tall for prairie dogs to see their predators coming, and they like to live in more bald patches. And, and I don't know, you know, if, if, uh, prairie restoration is, is, uh, you know, an option. Uh, when we did our field trip with Postac, um, uh, Heather Swanson drove me past a, uh, us actually, Michelle, you were in the car. Um, and we drove, we drove, uh, past a, uh, a field where one of our tenant farmers is doing an interesting mix of native, um, grasses and crops, not necessarily getting much of a harvest at this point, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's a way of creating, um, land that's not as conducive to prairie dog colony formation. Um, and I thought that was awesome. I thought that was a really cool idea. And, you know, if it, if it grows, great. Um, so, you know, I think there, there are a lot of great ideas out there. Um, I look forward to hearing more of them. And, uh, I know it's a sticky problem.
Yeah, yeah, Michelle.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to really thank staff for all the work that has happened over the five years. This is such a complicated and divisive issue. I wasn't on the board at the time, but I remember reading all the deliberations and the, just the many hours of, I think, tears and blood and sweat that went into those meetings. And I think you were on the board at that time. And, um, it was just a tough issue for the entire community. Um, and it still is. Um, I don't, I, I personally like to have polite neighbors. I think polite neighbors are really good neighbors, just for the record. Um, but I, I think, um, you know, we, we I want to respect the, the neighbors and the, the three hundred and fifty adjacent landowners. My, my request is that we are equitable about this in this community, about our, our very limited resources. Um, I'm, I'm curious to hear what that number is, Dan, that we spend on this very, um, difficult issue per year. Um, but I just want to make sure that we are being equitable with our resources, including our staff time. Um, I, I, I would imagine if you're going to give three hundred and fifty landowners, um, meetings, you should also give the thirty-five thousand dog owners or whatever that number is, that kind of access as well. So just trying to keep things at scale, know that this is a very, um, important group of people and you are, uh, you know, a constrained staff. And, uh, ask that you continue to use your time wisely and equitably amongst our entire community. And, uh, I really appreciate the work that you all have done.
Great, uh, thank you for all the comments. And I do want to extend the appreciation.
Can I piggyback off that, that one real quick, Dave?
John, yeah.
Yes, I, I also want to thank staff, uh, for all the work, um, and the additional stuff for proposing like defense cost share. But I think all the commenters who came out, um, uh, and, and gave us their thoughts on this issue. Um, it's really important and it's really great to hear from you all on this. Um, you know, I, I think I've heard you loud and clear, and I think staff has heard you loud and clear that, you know, you want us to, uh, you know, remove prairie dogs and clean up weeds. Um, you know, to, to Michelle's point, I think we need to be careful about the resources we put in here, um, you know, uh, it, are, are we going to send more people to, to listen and talk and have these conversations, um, you know? When, when it's not going to be productive, right? It feels like staff is working as, as quickly as we're comfortable with removing these prairie dogs and we're making a lot of great progress. Um, and, uh, you know, we're, we're hearing the public on this. So I, I would caution us not to, um, you know, do, do more engagement, um, and spend a lot of resources on that when we've heard the message, um, and do the appropriate amount there.
Thanks, John. Um, so again, I'd like to extend the board's appreciation for everyone who commented, uh, this evening. We do appreciate, uh, your comments and, uh, have listened and heard. Uh, and also, uh, reemphasize the December eleventh, um, public open house as an opportunity to um, do some of the one-on-one work that, uh, we all think, uh, would be very effective and also to be there to make suggestions, um, ideas and, uh, learn, learn some more about what's happening. So thanks again for all the participation. And with that, uh, we'll still move matters from the board, uh, to the, um, open space board retreat. And, uh, the follow-up and, uh, starting off with the, the draft that we are reviewing on rules of procedures.
Dave, was there an opportunity to comment about the North Sky Trail? Dave, was there an opportunity to comment about the North Sky Trail? Is that coming up or is that, that's later?
We'll come, uh, we'll, we'll get to that after.
Okay, alright.
So Michelle and Harmon and Dan, um, it's all yours.
Okay, so we, we can do this together, Harmon. Um, but yes, the, in the packet, um, you all should have received the draft rules of procedure as well as notes from the retreat. Would we like to start, start with any, um, comments on the notes of the retreat at all? Open that up. Does anybody have any comments on that part of it? I see a no from Brady.
Yeah, I just thought it was an overwhelming positive experience and, uh, I thought the, the notes captured it fine, but, um, it was, it was a great time to spend with you all.
Just a kudos to Leah for, uh, helping to capture those notes and put those together.
Agreed. And, and I kind of like having the photos of the stickies in there. I, I think it kind of reminds me of, oh yeah, I put that one up there. So I, I appreciate that too.
Thank you.
I did actually hear from somebody who read that and, and read those notes. And I was like, you can read that? Okay, anything from you, John, about the, the me, the meeting notes or the retreat notes? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, so we'll move on to the rules of procedure. You all saw a draft about a month ago and then again in this packet. And so I thought I'd just start with, uh, at the top, in article one and see if we have any feedback there. You, you can see our, yeah, there you go. Thank you, Leah. Anything on the, the first sentence that was, or even just the title that was, um, was edited? Okay. Number one, we, we made an edit there just to reflect the actual code that governs a lot of the procedures that our board follows. Excuse me. Okay, um, how about number two?
I thought we could do a slightly better job of defining what we mean by expectations. Attendance expectations. I mean, I think it's, it's clearly stated somewhere. Is it in the charter that if you miss three in a row, you're out? Uh, the, the implication here is that, at least as I read it, attendance expectations might be different than the letter of the law, meaning that we may have expectations that differ from not missing three consecutive meetings. And so, uh, without wanting to overly wordsmith this, I would just say something about excessive absenteeism. I, I think the, what I'm reading this is that we want to have the ability internally to identify when we think someone is, is, is absent too much, even though they may not have hit the three consecutive meeting threshold. And so I think by saying excessive, we're implying that we have an idea what that might be. And then it's up to our discretion at a future time to determine if someone has or hasn't passed that threshold. So that's a lot of words to say. I would add the word excessive in there to be more clear about, uh, what we mean by expectations.
I think that's good feedback, Brady. Um, I would like to make a proposal if there's, uh, just to that end. But before, I, I was going to suggest that we add some language to number three to address that part of it. But I, I, but, but while we're in number two, I thought it would be, I would like to make a, an edit and I thought it'd be good to, actually stop that first sentence, um, at, sorry, I'll go back to the first sentence, um, and strike open houses. Right? And, and really, um, have our attendance expectations be around meetings that are really meant for the board, that are designed for the board, um, rather than the community at large. And those would be business meetings, special meetings, study sessions and field trips.
And I would add, Michelle, I think if we had, you know, of the board, um, at the end of, after field trips, so that it's clear that we're talking about board meetings, uh, board special meetings, board field trips and, uh, study sessions.
You might consider adding retreats into that because that's sometimes almost the important meeting as much as any others.
So what if we were to change, um, take out the words open houses and add, uh, retreats of the board?
Right.
That'd be perfect.
Do you get that, Leah?
Oh, you're getting it right there in real time.
And just going back real quickly, um, to the title, would it be better to have just conduct of trustees rather than expectations? Uh, and conduct? Yeah, expectations just seems to me to kind of imply, you know, a little more ambiguity or, or, and basically what we're talking about, this is how, uh, the board, we want, or the board of trustee should conduct itself. Anyway, just, uh, a question.
So I, I like the, uh, the term expectations because it's like what Brady was just saying about it. It's not a requirement that we're talking about. These are expectations and conduct is really how you comport yourself. It's not necessarily how you meet the expectations of your peers or of the station. So I'm good with, with it the way it is. And, and then as far as the excessive piece, I don't know, Brady, do you think that maybe we, like Michelle was saying, maybe we wordsmithed three a little bit better?
I, I'm, I'm not attached to anything other than I think the repeated reference to expectations that remain undefined is problematic.
So what if, what if we said, where it says, should a trustee regularly fail to meet attendance expectations? I mean, I, I doubt anybody's going to get away with regularly failing. So what if we just say, should a trustee fail to meet attendance expectations by, you know, excessively missing?
We could just say, should a trustee regularly fail to attend meetings? But which defend, which defines what our expectation is.
But I would like to think that you can't regularly fail to, to make meetings and stay on the board.
Exactly.
So, but I mean, even the charter says you can't do that, or the, the code two seven seven says you can't do that. So should, should a trust, you wanted to define it a little bit better. So should a trustee fail to meet attendance expectations by, what do they have to do to, to fail to meet the expectations? Here's your chance to define it.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. And what I'm saying is it's, you know, we can, we can, we can know it when we see it without being, you know, numerically explicit, the, 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 and, and I think we all know that by the letter of the law, if you miss, if you attend every third meeting, you're never, you're not going to get out of there kicked out because you never hit the three threshold. But I would say that's too much.
Yeah.
And so I would say that if, if a trustee's regularly, I don't know, yeah, I don't, wordsmithing this real time, this is not optimal, please.
Can I try? Uh, I just, I, I attempted this beforehand. So, um, how about should a trustee miss an excessive number of service expectations outlined above? And then go to the board, blah, blah, dot, dot, dot. Does that, it's, it's, it's miss an excessive number of those. And, and outlined above, which is the combination of business meetings, special meetings, study session, field trips and retreats. Not as the code says, which is just business meetings. Is that better? I don't like the word fail. Is that? Expectations outlined above. Maybe, I don't know. So, yeah.
I still have trouble with the word excessive, like that it really doesn't define, uh, what we're talking about, you know, any better than three, any better than a number. And it's like, okay, well, who, what's excessive? And I don't know, my thought might be miss continually, continually miss or, you know, or something like that. From my perspective, might be a, a little more instructive as far as what we actually are talking about. Because from some people's perspective, you know, two meetings might be excessive. And from other people's perception, it might be, well, you know, more than half. You know, again, we, we had some, uh, issues with the, uh, three consecutive, uh, meeting, uh, direction in the charter. So anyway, I, I, I would question whether excessive is the word that we really want to put in there.
Um, I like the word excessive mainly because, um, we, we can, we, we, we can have a conversation around it when we're feeling it. I think when we were in the situation this most recent time, it, I had flagged it in a meeting way before we, and, and observed it publicly in a meeting, the, the absences that we were experiencing. And at that point, I would have had the ability to flag. And I did flag that that was excessive to me. And so it, it offers us the opportunity to have the conversation. So, so what I may think is excessive gives me the ability to bring it up in a meeting and us to talk about it. And then we can potentially take action as a result. Now, of course, council can take a different action according to the code, but we can take our action and have a, a conversation about, we think it's excessive. And this, we are concerned about a person's ten attendance, uh, attendance.
I'm okay with it.
I, I'm, I'm a little iffy on the word excessive too. I, I think we could live with it. I'll just throw out another option. I know you hated the word fail, but, but if we borrowed some of the language from above and just say, should a trustee fail to, um, attend to their service expectations as outlined above? You like that?
Yeah.
Can you try that? Fail to attend to their service expectations as outlined above? And then you go to the board may vote. Cause the, the expectation is regular attendance, right? Or just attendance. I don't see the word regular anymore. We could put regular up into by regularly attending business and special meetings. Is this getting better?
It is, yeah.
I like it. John, do you have any feedback here?
I, I think we're on the right track here. And if we're saying outlined above, should we move for above three and bump three down?
So I, I would say, you know, this back to what Dave was talking about. And I think that's the difference between an expectation and a comportment issue. The number four is a conduct issue. And, um, I guess four and one are conduct issues and two and three are expectations.
Okay. So, so you're saying we should keep it where it is or?
Or maybe move four up to two.
Brady, is that?
I'm not going to interrupt your flow. I think this is going swimmingly.
Okay. Okay. So let's move on to article two, um, where we don't have any edits um, until we get to number six. And seven. We'll keep going. Um, eight, we, we added, um, the code there again. And then reading glasses out.
And all that struck through language in yellow was the recitation, um, in some cases, the, the, uh, incorrect recitation of the code that we just replaced with references to the code so that we could shorten the rules.
Yeah, thanks for that. And then let's see. Um, anything in nine?
Is nine B?
I'll look at.
Are we in good shape with nine B? Now, there's been some discussion about. Dave, is that? Read correct?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm looking at, that wrong B. Um, yeah, I, I think the, the only thing that, um, and Harmon and I talked about this, uh, before the meeting, the only thing that I'm concerned about is that I, I have talked with the city attorneys, city attorney, uh, attorneys, and I just don't want them to think that what they told me, uh, is being ignored. But I do think and, and agree that we ought to leave this language in and let them then suggest the revisions, which, um, which hopefully they will do. And so I'm comfortable leaving it in with the caveat that I heard what they told me and this, this isn't meant to ignore what they, they advised initially. But I think what we would like is to make sure we have the appropriate language, um, regarding this particular item.
Okay, good. So the attorneys will let us know what they think of it because that, that will be the next step after we, um, move this forward tonight. They will review it. So in terms of, does it say, does it say the things that we want it to say? Do we have any feedback on that part of it? I'll, I'll start with you, John. Are you okay with that?
I, I am okay with that.
Harmon?
Yeah, because I think at, at the end of the day, what, what we're trying to do is provide the chair with some guidance. And this is the way the board feels. And if, uh, if it needs to be tweaked by the city attorney's office, fine. But, but they need to know that we're looking for some guidance, not just, you know, the public comment rules will be the city's first amendment rules. That doesn't give the charity guidance. So I think we give the city attorney a little guidance by sending it to them with this paragraph in. And then, you know, they can turn it back to us with what they think is legally correct.
We know we have the opening statement that, uh, Sam reads at the meeting outlining what is sort of acceptable, non-acceptable behavior. And imagine what might happen is we might cut and paste some of that. And what this is doing is basically saying empowering the chair to sort of enforce that citywide sort of decorum policy that we have for community decorum.
Nice.
Great.
Okay, so, um, moving on from nine and, and we are, um, no other changes in article article three.
Five or three, right? Three?
I have three.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So, um, an article four, the new article four. Um, there was one amendment here or revision here. Any comments on that?
Yeah, I would like to just add a little clarifying language to what we mean by commence. So that, uh, it's clear that either we complete, uh, the discussion or complete the item that was under consideration and not take up any new items or that uh, it's meant not to take up any new items or something so that the, the notion of commencement has some, uh, substance to exactly what we mean.
Harmon, remind me, did we, did we plagiarize this? Did we just copy this from where, um, another board?
Yeah, we, this is the, the city's, um, policy. I think planning board and city council agendas use this language exactly, except they have ten o'clock and maybe we're lightweights. Uh, so we chose nine.
I'm a lightweight. Would it help, Dave, if we added the word new and, and in front of agenda items will not be commenced?
Yeah, or additional. Yeah, or additional, or yeah, new. Yeah, something like that. So there, there is a, an understanding that i- if there's a discussion taking place at nine o'clock, that that discussion presumably will be completed. But there will be no further items under consideration unless the board votes to do that.
I'm a little concerned about saying that an ongoing item that spans nine o'clock will be completed. Because if we had a six hour item that was started at eight and we had 50 public commenters. You know, we might want to reserve the right to say, we're going to break this up into two meetings. Even though our rule, you know, we don't want to have rules to tell us we have to finish that item.
Yeah, my understanding of the council is that in that situation, the vote is to, you know, continue the meeting until that item is completed. I'm, I'm not aware that they break up an item.
Oh, yeah. We, we've done, when I was on planning board, we did two day meetings for, remember Hogan Pancast? That came to you guys too. So, and the planning board before me had a three day meeting for Hogan Pancast. So no, that it's, it's, it happens. I don't think it happens at OSPT much, but it's possible.
So are we satisfied with new or is?
A new agenda, some could be applied that it wasn't even on the agenda and it was added. So agenda items that have not yet commenced.
By nine o'clock.
By nine o'clock, she'll not, you know, maybe it's, because it's, it's not a new agenda item. It's, it's an agenda item that hasn't, that hasn't been addressed yet.
I think that's a good, good way of putting it. Another way of thinking about it is that the city knows how to operate meetings under this language. And it may not be perfect, but everybody pretty much knows how to up. I think all the staff knows how to operate meetings under this language and boards know, but we can make our own rules. So, you know, if we want to make it clearer, we should. I like Dan's concept.
And since people know how this actually operates, Harmon, is it implied that if it, we don't get to it that night, that it would automatically be taken up at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's still an agendized item, right? That
Yeah, I think it'll be a case by case basis. I think that if we felt there was time sensitivity in it, that we would convey that at that meeting. And that might influence your vote of whether or not to extend the meeting or to push it out. If we had, if we were going to council the next week and we needed your recommendation, we would explain that. And hopefully that would affect how you might vote to proceed with extending the meeting beyond nine.
Or you could imagine a scenario where Steph's going to council next month and they say, yeah, we can extend this. You know, if, if we don't extend this meeting and hear this agenda item tonight, we're going to have to use the, the fourth Wednesday and call you back for another meeting to get this item done. You know, and then you have to decide, do you want another meeting or do you want to stay up late?
So John, are you okay with keeping that language as is and not being like explicit that it will be taken up at the very next meeting?
Yeah, I, I'm fine. I, I had some concerns around, you know, th- this being used to punt items or delay it. But knowing that other boards use this language as is, I'm comfortable with it, especially when Dan can threaten us with another meeting. That, that, that seems good enough for me.
And also, you know, this is aspirational language. The board and the director and chair will strive, the board's goal, right? It's not. The only requirement is that we vote on items that start after nine.
Okay, all right. So I, if we're all comfortable with that, we'll keep moving on here. Oh, sentence here. Not yet commenced by nine P M. Have not yet commenced by nine P M must require a majority vote of boards present to continue.
Maybe, maybe Dan could see if he could dredge up the language again.
Well, I, I don't think my suggested words fit into this sentence. I think that's what I pointed out. So maybe it's the board shall not.
Will not be taken up except by majority of board members. If after the night, after, after nine P M, you said will not be taken up or some similar language like that, does that make sense?
Agenda items that have not yet commenced by nine P M shall not be taken up. At this meeting.
Yeah.
Except by majority votes.
Yeah. Does that, that work well for you?
I know grammarily wouldn't like that sentence, but I can live with it.
I was just thinking of Karen Hallwig. If she were here, she would like have a fit about that sentence.
For some reason, then it passed a voice in these sorts of documents, you know, is okay. So I, if this is closely mirroring what other boards have used, I think we can move forward personally.
Okay. All right, we're moving on. Sorry, Karen.
But Dave, that, that gets to your, your desire to clear it up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
Thank Dan.
Thanks.
Okay, article four, there were no changes. And article five and six, there were no changes. And article seven, I'm hoping that there's a change and that we can have an adoption next month, but and, and put a date in there. But if, and if there's no more feedback, I will go ahead and stop it there. And the next steps will be that we will send it to Janet Michaels to review. If we get additional feedback, then Harmon and I will be on point to, to field that and come back to you all next month.
Well done, Michelle and Harmon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we made good progress on that and appreciate the, all your, both Harmon and Michelle and Dan, your work on that. So thanks. So one last thing under matters from the board, I did want to check with the board on a couple of things. And get any comments or feedback from you on both the post that field trip that we were on a couple of weeks ago, as well as the North Sky Trail Field Trip. So if board members have any thoughts or comments on either of those, I think now would be a good time to, to tell us.
I would like to request better weather the next time we have a field trip. And I'll be the one to order it or whatever that is required. It was very chilly that day, but I thought it was a really good meeting. Thanks for everybody. Thanks for Dave for suggesting it and staff for making that happen. And, and for Dan for not getting us stuck this time.
Great.
Let's keep bringing that up. Let's keep, let's bring that up every meeting for some reason.
Well, I will echo those comments. I, I thought it was very well done and a, a good start. And hopefully it will be an annual event. And I think that the more we, we get to know members of Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee on joint projects, the better those projects will go. So in the North Sky Trail, any comments?
Do you want to? Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to, to say, you know, for, if, if anybody in the wide world is listening, this field trip was a combined field trip with the open space board and POSAC, which is the Parks and Open Space Board of, or Advisory Committee of the county. And the staff from the city and the staff from the county. And we went out and looked at two projects that were very much connected to each other because they were way out east in the county and both of them riverine improvement projects, you know, really trying to restore some natural function to old channelized bits of Boulder Creek, places where the creek was channelized by our long history of gravel mining in the flood plains of, of all of our rivers, the same drains, the same way, for example. And, and, you know, I thought that the, the county availed itself of a whole lot of federal money and, and the city mostly footed the bill. And while the county spent more money than we did, both projects were amazing. And the, 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 the city project just got done. The county project has been done for five years, but the city project just got done and it, it, I mean, there were bulldozers pushing dirt around and it already looked like a natural landscape in a lot of ways. It was amazing. And we have such thoughtful, dedicated staffs, both at the city and county to do the kind of work that they're doing. Just really eye opening, really amazing work. And, and the coolest part about the whole thing for me was when the sandhill cranes flew over in the middle of the county presentation at the county site and Heather says, can you hold on for a second? Let's just listen. And, and to hear those things, you know, just making their sound from whatever they were 1,500 feet up in the air and a half a mile, a mile away. And you could hear them. It was just awesome. I had a great time.
Great, thanks. I, I should tell the board, actually following up on the sandhill crane comment from Harmon, that my wife and I were out walking our dog in a little park next to our house. And I heard the same sound in a, like, I'm looking up and I can't, there's no, you can't see anything. The sky is blue and there's nothing up there. And then all of a sudden a flock of, of sandhill cranes. They turned so that the sun caught their feathers and you could then see the glint of the sunlight off the birds. And it was the same thing. It was just this flock of sandhills that were kind of circling around as they made their migratory way south. But it was the eerie sound and you're looking around like, where's that coming from? We finally figured it out.
Well, I'd never heard them to know them. And I was so moved. I, I told my wife, I said, you know, on your way home from work, you should head out east and, you know, see if you can get to some open space and just look up and hang around for a while because you'll never hear them in the city. There's too much ambient noise. And then I went home and I heard him from my backyard.
So it's cool. Great. Thanks. John, do you want to jump in or on post, on the field trip?
I, I really enjoyed the field trip as well. Thanks everyone who helped organize it, make that happen. Dave and I got to sit in the van and spend some quality time with some county board members and, you know, talk to them and kind of exchange notes and stuff. It was a really great experience, you know, to kind of meet some of our fellow, fellow trustees from, from the county.
Great, thanks. Let's jump to the North Sky Trail. I know Brady, you want to say something?
Yeah, I was a little over eager earlier in the meeting. I just want to say, and I may have said it before, but you know, I just think the way that the city has implemented this, just A plus. It's so impressive having. And a lot of times y'all hear what can be improved and it's important to focus on those things, but let's celebrate this one because it's, it, the, the city took the time to do this and do it right. Years ago, when this was a big question, whether or not this trail was going to be aligned on which side of highway, the highway going into Lions, Highway 36 there. I, I walked the, the alignment on the, on the west side. And, and it, it made sense until you came face to face with this chain link fence. And it seemed kind of hopeless to me at the time, just like, how are we going to do this? We're probably going to have to do a bunch of switchbacks way up onto the ridge side. And well, that'll be good for getting a workout in. It's not going to make a whole lot of sense in terms of contouring along. And it, and the fact that we as a city took the time to get a conservation easement, that fence came down. You built a great fence along that made the property owner happy, I presume. And, and that trail is just, it's, it's, it feels world class. You get a different feel for where we fit in the landscape up there. It's an absolutely different experience than it would have been if the alignment had been on the other side. And I just thank everyone who's been involved with this project. I just feel really proud that we took the time to implement it and implement it correctly. So well, well done. I can't wait for it to open up.
Great, thanks. And I would echo that. I, I think the trail is well designed and well constructed. It's really a, a nice experience out on a, a nice piece of property. And I think when the two bridges come in, that'll be pretty impressive. And they're due to be installed early next year, January, I think. So once that happens, we'll look forward to that trail being open sometime this spring. Great. Let, let me just real quickly say one other thing. There was the designation of a new natural area in additions to two other natural areas a couple of weeks ago. And celebrating the, the designations, we had a nice turnout of both state and open space staff in a really nice celebration out on the South Boulder Creek Trail. And it's nice to get those naturally as designated. And I was just going to pass some natural area descriptions around. If you have not seen them or are interested in a little more detail. Take a look at those. But anyway, I, I thought a really nice celebration and well deserved. So thanks for that. So with that, Dan, I think we're matters from the department and we're
Yeah, for that. Great. Well, we've got two very interesting W agenda items, wildfire and wildlife. Program updates. We're going to start with our wild, wildland fire resilience program update. And Brian Anaker and Paul Dennison are going to be leading that. We'll obviously get some port, support from Brian Oliver from Fire and Rescue as well. The reason that we're before you tonight is we're not really at a central place of needing a decision. But we just feel like this is such an emergent program area for us, an enhanced program area. It's been a strategic enhancement element for the past couple of years. It will be in the next couple of years. And so we just feel like a regular cadence at this point in time for this program because it's vastly evolving. We're building in new components of it. Each year, it seems like over the past few years. So we have the Community Wildland Fire Protection Plan that is right now ongoing. And then we have the concept of developing some management guidance along the wildland urban interface on open space lands, which is sort of a new look for us. And so we felt it would be a, just a good time for a program update. And to ask you, ask you some questions about where we're headed. So with that, I'm going to turn things over first to Brian Anaker.
Okay, thank you, Dan, and good evening trustees. Brian Anaker, Science and Climate Resilience Senior Manager. I've got Paul Dennison here, O S M P's Wildland Fire Senior Program Manager, who you may remember from Wonderland Lake. We've also got O S M P's Chris Warner with us in attendance and Boulder Fires, Brian Oliver, hi guys. And we may have Carrie Webster with us virtually. They'll be, yeah, she is here. Great. And they'll be available to support us with questions. Excellent. As Dan mentioned, we've got a variety of topics for you tonight. I'm going to start us off with an overview of wildfire resilience program at O S M P in the city. Talking specifically about some strategic enhancements, in particular the C W P P that we're updating currently. Then I'll turn it over to Paul to update you about this new idea of a WEE program as well as to give you an update on where we are with prescribed fire. Our plan is to take questions after each section. So we'll pause for about five minutes. We'll prompt you with a question. Take your answers to that and answer any other questions you might have. Okay, so last Okay, so last time we did a deep dive on wildfire with you was not too long ago. February of this year, we had an open space board trustee study session. We framed it in the context of climate change where with warming, we're getting drying and our fuels are drying out. We're getting extreme winds and I don't have to tell you, we've had a lot of extreme wildfires in part related to those factors going back to October of 2020, we had the Cowood Fire, not on open space land, but nearby burning over 10,000 acres. At the same time, we had record setting fires in East Troublesome and Cameron Peak to our west and north. And then, of course, a year later, the Marshall Fire in late December ripped through 6,000 acres of land super rapidly, corresponding with hurricane force winds. And an economic devastation total of over $2 billion and lots of trauma in our community. A lot of lay managers are raising their eyebrows about what happened and what can we do differently in the communities is asking a lot of questions about that as well. A few months after that, yeah, I heard that sigh. Few months after that, we had a much smaller, but still impactful wildfire called the Incar Fire, just 190 acres, which was able to be contained in part thanks to some vegetation management that had been completed on those properties recently forest thinning and prescribed grazing to manage tall grass helped to contain that fire. Still impactful in the sense that it led to the evacuation of thousands of city of Boulder residents in the wildland urban interface. Next slide. So when we think about where OSMP guidance comes from, when we talk about wildfire resilience, we can cite these three plans at least. Dave, 1995 Long Range Management Policy. What an amazing document. It's so thoughtful and forward looking. And it discussed fire and prescribed fire in particular, not in depth, but at least there was some good description in there. The Forest Ecosystem Management Plan is probably the deepest dive on wildfire and set us up for the forestry thinning program that Chris Warner and his team are running today. And talked about the historic range of variability for fires and what it might look like going forward. And then the grassland plan from 2010 talked about prescribed fire as well and the need to return it to our ecosystems. Some of the topics and themes then throughout those plans are that open space properties, the natural areas are really fire adapted ecosystems. They're expected to see regular low intensity fires and in the absence of those ecological health can decline. And one way to think about it is that the systems are largely fire starved to date. Thanks to, you know, 150 years of really thorough fire suppression that goes along with colonization. So as vegetation managers, we come up with surrogates for fire, forest thinning in our overgrown ponderosa and mixed conifer stands ditch fuel management where we've got water running and lots of shrubs and trees growing in those corridors, grazing throughout our grasslands to reduce biomass there, weed management throughout the system. And one of our favorite tools is prescribed fire. Of course, it's the most natural. But it's also one of the most difficult to pull off in terms of barriers. Paul will tell us more about that shortly. Okay, next. In terms of these plans, there's a lot of updates that are in conversation right now since the Marshall Fire. Thinking about catastrophic fires, do these plans talk about the new reality of the mega fires that have come to California and seem to be arriving here in Colorado? As we go through our CWPP and start to update our understanding of risk about the WUI and the GUI, the grassland urban interface. Do we have similar guidance or do we need updates? Following off that plan. Paul will tell you about the WUI program and prescribed fire. Both of those are going to potentially trigger some update needs to these or other plans. Bearing in mind our conversation in September at the retreat where the board was interested in using more of a scalpel approach where we can take focal topics like these and update the plans accordingly, without necessarily having to relitigate the entire plan and update it from start to finish. Next. When we zoom out and think about wildfire resilience for the city as a whole, we've been grouping it in the last few years using these national cohesive strategies. It's a very diverse topic, but these are the three buckets that allow us to talk about it. And I think it's pretty well encompassing resilient landscapes, fire adapted communities and safe and effective wildfire response. Next. I'm just going to give you an idea of what these look like with regards to some strategic enhancements we're putting in place this year and in the out years after this that are triggered with the passing of the ballot initiative from 2022, which created a tax fund, we call the climate tax, which does a lot of good work for climate change, but has a specific allotment of about $1.5 million to spend on wildfire mitigation work. And that should run through 2040. Next. So in resilient landscapes, a couple of things we've been able to do with that funding already in 23 is increase Chris Warner's forestry crew from eight to about 13. And moving that crew into the shoulder seasons and even retaining them along to some of them to be a winter crew first ever. In addition, buying some really cool fancy equipment to allow us to treat some of the more difficult to treat stands that are in some of the steeper slopes and to do that work with even more efficiency. In the context of ditches, we've been studying our ditch fuels, where the biggest piles of fuels are. What are BMPs look like for those fuel reduction and removal of that debris? And as was mentioned earlier, bringing onboard a water technician was made possible with the climate tax fund. Within the realm of fire adapted communities, this is where a lot of our partners come in. So we'll talk WUI program in a minute. But Office of Disaster Management received funding through the climate tax fund to really enhance their community preparedness materials, including translation into Spanish. Boulder Fire has ramped up their community risk reduction staffing. These are the staff that do the detailed home assessments and make recommendations for changes to improve the fire resilience of the building, the landscaping and anything connected within that home ignition zone, which Paul will talk about in a minute. We know we have a big backlog of demand for those and these new staff will help us chip into that backlog. Another component that we're funding newly starting in 2024 is a grants program. So we can take some of this tax collection and put it back in the hands of homeowners to help them offset their costs to make these changes to reduce their risk, starting in their home ignition zone. We're really thinking about that through this equity lens, meaning that we want to find those homeowners who have the most risk, but also the biggest economic need and align our funding accordingly. And then, of course, the CWPP, which I'll talk about in the next couple of slides is we're using the funding from the climate tax to pay a consultant to work with staff in the community there. Next. Last, under wildfire response, Boulder Fire is well staffed here and OSMP is fairly well staffed, over 40 red carded staffs ourselves. But we did identify some needs from additional funding around additional weather monitoring. So we could have a better sense around fire danger and as well as looking into options to improve early detection. Right. All right, CWPP, we do have one for the city of Boulder from 2007. We are interested in updating it in the wake of the Marshall Fire and these other fires. We're not alone in that concurrent updates for Boulder County and our neighboring fire districts and towns are being done as well. Our city staff are to a degree, it's possible tracking those on those core teams, making sure we're in communication, sharing the same consultant. So we're not duplicating work. And we're coming up with coherent plans that will talk to one another. The goal of a CWPP is to heighten safety and resilience to our community from wildfire. Brian Oliver and Boulder Fires are project manager and being supported by SWCA is our consultant. Next. And some of the milestones in terms of where we've been already. Kick this off in spring of this year, opened a public survey in May, which you hopefully have heard about and taken. And if not, it's still open. And then a series of public engagement events, community block party in July, an open house at our hub in August, a WhatsApp Boulder event in September. We had a online webinar just last week to give a CWPP update. Then the team is busy gathering data, creating base maps, updating a risk assessment, lining out mitigation strategies, developing an implementation and action plan. And then two more community engagement plan, events planned for 2024. The draft plan will be ready in spring for public comment. And along with that, we'll be publishing a hub data site and a story map to allow the community to interact with the document above and beyond an eight and a half by 11 PDF. Next. So a little snapshot, the survey's still open, but we asked the consultant to give us the data delivery for the city of Boulder residents that responded and sharing it with you here for the first time, fresh off the presses. 229 city of older residents have taken this and I'm just summarizing their responses here. There's a lot of questions that were asked, but these are just four highlights. Eighty nine percent of those respondents said they're more concerned now than they were five years ago about safety from wildfires, perhaps not surprising there. Eighty one percent would like to see more projects in their community that treat and reduce hazardous vegetation, which we think is a pretty good setup and degree of support to talk about the WUI program. Forty percent of those respondents have themselves taken action within five feet of their homes, which I think is a fairly surprising number to me. Like to see it be higher, of course. And then, of course, 90% say that local government has at least a partial responsibility for fire preparedness mitigation, which is just good reason for us to be talking to you tonight. All right. So we'll take a break now. I got a question, which is what questions do you have, if any, for us about the CWPP and its connection to managing wildfire risk on OSMP? I'm going to time you. We'll do five minutes.
So I have a question, Brian, on the survey, were they self selected?
Were the respondents on the survey self selected or how was that sample derived? And you said that it's still open. Are we promoting it or it just seems like 229 isn't really a great sample size that can considering the importance of the issue and is there some way that we can kind of get more people both to respond to the survey as well as to understand, you know, kind of what the issue is and what's being done?
Yeah, I could start and Brian, if you have anything to add, feel free. I, the survey's still open. We're still pushing it out. Pretty much every field notes we send out is a link in a call. We could probably do a little bit more to push it out and maybe we can connect with Brian and see if SWCA has another way to to get that out. I don't know that we have a particular number we're trying to reach. I think that number grows by a lot when you start putting in Louisville, Lafayette and other Boulder County towns. And so I think as a whole, we've got a big set of data there. And then in terms of the design of the survey, it's come one, come all, anyone who stumbles on the link can take it. So it isn't statistically valid in the way that some of our OSMP surveys are designed to make sure we hit all age demographics, income levels, neighborhoods, census blocks. We can do some post processing to kind of evaluate if there's big gaps in the community that we've left out. We do have demographic data that comes in with the survey. So we can do some of those comparisons and and moreover, cross tab and pull out the results demographically and geographically. That answer the question?
Yeah. I was just thinking Wonderland, for example, you know, that that area, you know, it would be nice to kind of get the word out and get some response from, you know, some of those you know, adjacent homeowners and stuff and similarly in other places where the, you know, wildland urban interface is is really right there. So great. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, maybe I kind of missed this. But this CWPP and its connection to OSMP programs. So is CWPP really an interagency program?
It's, it's a plan that's specific to the city of Boulder. So all city departments would be invested in seeing, having input on a CWPP. And then there's additional CWPPs for some of our neighboring fire districts and other cities. So I, that's a start of an answer. I'm not sure if it.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm just getting familiar with this. And I know we talked about it a little bit at the retreat too. But you know, there's so many different landowners, right? Like I was just in in the vicinity of the Marshall Fire on McCaslin where I bet you the city of Louisville has mowed, you know, somebody mowed the sides of McCaslin Boulevard like I've never seen before. You know, is all that grass turned brown? And I don't think, I think that's a direct result of, you know, some kind of wildfire grassland fire mitigation program that didn't exist until recently. So, you know, that's not an open space. That's not a piece of open space property. Of course, the city has a lot of right of way and different departments of the city own different pieces of land. So that that was just kind of what I was asking you to comment on is how how SMP works with other departments.
I think the main connection would be through the Boulder County wide CWPP where all stakeholders within the county would be welcome and part of that conversation. The other thing I could say is we have a what's called a fire shed where a lot of agencies across Boulder County come and discuss matters like that with a specific focus on grasslands. And so that's our chance to hear about what Louisville's doing in terms of their mowing program, what Lafayette is thinking. We can talk about our WUI program and counties there as well. And make sure we're kind of at least working up the same talking points, even if some municipalities or agencies are pursuing it a little more aggressively and a little more bluntly and others are taking a little more prioritized approach or surgical approach. At least we can be aware of one another's choices and maybe give some feedback to one another about, actually, it wasn't, we were worried about this, but turns out it's okay to do it this way. So we're, we're eyes and ears open and we have a lot of formal engagement opportunities via CWPP and other avenues to share BMPs on that.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Well, no, I was just going to invite and see if Paul and Brian, but the CWPP is going to address a a whole, you know, whole bunch of different topics in regards to wildfire resilience, going from building, you know, buildings itself. And then there's opportunities for us as a single department on the land management side to have plans that are going to be a little bit more granular than the CWPP. So it's not like all we need as a department is the CWPP, then we can get to work. Is the CWPP is going to accomplish some work for us in terms of guidance. But then at the granular level, what about this 200 feet of open space? That's probably the job for our department to take, take work at what that means for us.
Yeah. And the, in the grander scheme, right, our, it is a city of Boulder CWPP, but we've taken into account our project area encompasses open space, utilities, property parks. And so our project area dives into all of our adjoining CWPP. So they're all linked. And the thing to remember though, is it's, it's not a regulatory document. It's making recommendations. Again, myself and Paul and Carrie Webster online, we all sit on the core teams of all those other CWPP preparedness efforts so that we're making sure all the plans, if they are suggesting some kind of mitigation work, that they're all in concert with whoever that neighboring agency is, whether it's Louisville Superior.
And then within the city, so building department is involved in CWPP work too?
No, because it's not, again, it's not a regulatory document and it's more geared towards reducing risk, reducing home ignition and providing for that recommendation for better and more effective response. So it's, it's not about buildings. It might make a recommendation for enhanced like policy decisions such as building codes or vegetation management codes, things like that. But again, recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, guys, in the interest of time, I think we should take on part two, if that works. Okay, Leah. Turn it over to Paul and give him a microphone.
Good evening, everyone, and good to see you all again. It seems like it was just yesterday that I was meeting you all on my third day of employment with Open Space and Mountain Parks, but in reality, it's been a couple of weeks. It's great to see you again. But in reality, it's been a couple of weeks. It's great to see you again. And first, I'd really like to compliment all of you on what is clearly excellent stewardship over this department and its programs. Dan and Brian's mentorship over the last few weeks has really been phenomenal and the partnership with Boulder Fire and other city departments and other organizations in the county and the city has really been terrific. So thank you all. It's really a privilege to be here. And as Brian said, the first topic I'm going to discuss is a new initiative within Open Space and Mountain Parks to create a program for reducing risk in the wild and urban interface. Leah, if you could go to the next slide. So on the occasion, when we first met at Wonderland Park, we talked about the, the background for this pilot program that we're working on developing, and it mainly has to do with reducing risk in the home ignition zone. So we talked about this a bit on the trail, but to revisit the, the core concepts, the home ignition zone refers to residential property to the structure itself. So building materials, homeowner maintenance measures like keeping flammable materials away from the home. And then it extends at least a hundred feet from the home and it prescribes vegetation management or recommends good management practices. And those recommendations change as you enter different zones, starting at the edge of residential structures and extending to a hundred feet. Probably needless to say, but the goal in developing a program for engaging private landowners and creating some process for managing hazardous vegetation and open space land is to reduce the likelihood that homes could be damaged or destroyed by wildfire and then also to reduce likelihood of home-to-home wildfire spread, such as the, such as we saw during the Marshall Fire. Leah, next slide. So I can barely read my own slide, which means some of you might have difficulty with it too. But this really busy slide is meant to show you how wide of a lens we are using to look at how to not only identify where to focus our initial efforts as we build this pilot program and then try to decide how we could effectively scale that to encompass all of the lands at risk in the city of Boulder Wild and Urban Interface. So as Brian mentioned, with most efforts within open space to reduce wildfire risk, the, the, almost the overarching context is through equity and opportunity, ensuring that any resources we provide are reaching the, the people most in need and with fewest resources first. So that's, you know, so a general criterion for, for this program and many others. But from there, we're looking at risk models that are quite sophisticated. We're using the same wildfire risk models that are being used to define and describe risk in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan that you all just heard about. And that enables us to see which parts of residential Boulder that abut city open space are most at risk of experiencing structure loss or damage. So that's one of the primary geospatial tools that we are going to use to start to identify site selection. And then from there, we have a fairly deep set of geospatial data that's going to sometimes help us to identify priority areas and other times help us see opportunities to enhance the work or identify areas that are sensitive and that we don't want to cause any disturbance that would undermine other O S and P goals. So looking at vegetation type and structure, is it meadow? Is it meadows mixed with shrubs? Is there timber? All of that will be informative in identifying what kind of management we can pursue to most effectively reduce risk. And then looking at biodiversity, the, the plants and wildlife, that's more in the aim of minimizing disturbance or adverse impacts. And then taking into consideration things like visitor experience. We don't want to be ruining anybody's Saturday afternoon hike with a, a lot of crews with weed whackers, keeping grasses low to reduce wildfire risk. And then there were other opportunities that geospatial data, and then of course, all of this will be supplemented with, with on-the-ground field analysis, but looking at trail systems, roads and so forth. These can provide good strategic opportunities during wildfire suppression. And so as much as we can keep that in mind during wildfire risk reduction activities, for instance, if we're managing grasses within 30 feet of homes, but then within 50 feet of those homes, there's a trail, it would make good sense to bring that vegetation management all to the trail to give while then firefighters another point of approach during wildfire suppression. So all of those considerations will help us to define the areas of the wild and urban interface that we're considering treating. And then they will also help to inform prioritizing those areas and also be informative in developing the prescription or the actual specific recommendations for what kind of vegetation management and reduction will be called for. Next slide, please. So all of that is probably hard to visualize. I'm sure some of you have familiarity with geographic information systems, GIS analysis. The next several slides, I want to make it really clear, these are, these were images or their GIS maps that I created mainly to illustrate how this process of WUI assessment, site evaluation, prioritization could look. This isn't the formal GIS project that we'll be using to select these sites. So I did this on my personal computer before I was even set up with an O S and P GIS license. So it's all publicly available data and, and for the point of illustration. So what we're looking at here, the blue lines are the Boulder City Limits and the, the clusters of color ranging from yellow to red shows wild and urban interface risk. So to, to put it simply, this is a wildfire risk model that simulates expected fire behavior. So flame length, rate of spread, other characteristics of fire behavior like that. And it relates it to where, where residential property is. So this is just showing yellow being there is some risk of wildfire damaging or destroying property and red being there's the dark red showing the areas of highest risk. And you can see, this will be a series of slides that shows sort of how this kind of geographic information system, geospatial analysis can unfold. So this is just for the entire county with, with Boulder's proper or city limits shown in blue. Next slide, please. Here we have open space land in dark blue. Next slide. And now it's the areas that have some modeled wild and urban interface risk clipped so that we are only seeing those areas of risk that are on city open space land. Next slide. This is proximity analysis is showing all of the residential property addresses that are within 100 feet of open space land. There are a little over 1,800 of them. Next slide. And then this shows the areas of most residential property and population density. So the point of all of this is first, we can see which areas on open space land represent some wildfire risk to homes. Then where exactly are those homes? And then where are the communities where residential property is the most dense? Those areas making the most sense to be prioritized, especially where those areas coincide with the areas of greatest expected wildfire risk or, or the expectation for more severe wildfire behavior. So this is where I, I hung it up. I hope that gives you some idea of how this kind of geospatial analysis can progress. And hopefully you can now imagine how this sort of mapping project could be complemented with vegetation mapping, ecological sensitivity, agricultural activities. We'll, we'll want to look at where grazing is happening, where irrigated fields are. All of that will be taken into consideration to devise a well-informed pilot program for wild and urban interface risk management. Next slide, please. So the resources that we are going to be leveraging, many of them are internal to O S and P. I'm sure you're all well aware of the FEM crew, the forestry crew that works under Chris Warner. They'll mainly be relied on if we are pursuing vegetation management, parts of the WUI and it's more than just keeping grasses mowed. We'll be relying on the FEM crew to do the woody vegetation management, any timber thinning. We'll also be working with ditch maintenance. Many of these areas of the wild and urban interface are, are close to ditch systems and they have a very good handle on fuels, hazardous fuels, reduction and, and maintenance in those systems. We are also going to be reinforcing partnerships that, that, that we already have. One of the primary partnerships we'll be leaning into is with Boulder Fires Community Risk Reduction Team. As Brian mentioned, part of the, or one of the uses for the climate tax monies has been to increase the capacity of that program. And they'll be doing detailed home assessments with a focus on these highest risk areas of the wild and urban interface. And that partnership is really going to ensure that we're not just managing vegetation. Let's say 50 feet from a home. That effort would really be undermined if we don't have some confidence that the homeowner understands all of the most important action that they can take, maintaining the exterior of their home, the first five feet, keeping that clear of flammable or combustible material and what to do in, in, on their side of the fence. Wildfire Partners is a similar program that's also seen a lot of capacity enhancements in the last year and a bit more. We do have some properties that are outside of Boulder City Limits, but are adjacent to open space land. And so we'll be looking to wildfire partners in much the same way that we'll be relying on the partnership with Boulder Fires Community Risk Reduction, also to make sure that any vegetation management we're pursuing is part of a comprehensive set of recommendations to reduce risk to homes. The watershed organizations have been very good partners to open space and mountain parks. As I understand it, they're really effective in working with multiple stakeholders or across multiple jurisdictions or organizations. I imagine them being a very useful resource, especially in community engagement and bringing together a variety of resources, especially in areas such as Wonderland Lake, where we'll hopefully be engaging entire neighborhoods and coming up with risk reduction projects that will reduce risk to entire communities rather than just individual homes. Then we have implementation resources such as Ready to Work. That's a, that's a workforce program. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, is it Boulder Bridge? Do you happen to know a bridge house? Thank you. Manages that and it, from my understanding, Open Space has a long history of working with those resources and they've delivered high quality and reliable work in the past. They're well-equipped particularly for managing the finer fuels, keeping grasses mowed in accordance with home ignition zone recommendations. And Mile High Youth Corps, I know less about, but I know that they've accomplished some very recent and successful projects. So expecting them to be a reliable partner as we develop these pilot programs is something that we'll be looking at. Next slide. So Brian, start your clock, maybe an extra minute or two, because there's more than one question here. The questions that I have for you trustees is whether you support the creation of this kind of wild and urban interface management program for O S and P? What are any questions, concerns or opportunities you have with respect to this program? Or, or do you foresee having? What information do you need to help support the wildland urban interface program, which presupposes that the answer to the first question is yes?
Do we have any questions or comments? Michelle?
Yes, for, for the, thank you for the great presentation and welcome again. Yeah, my, my answer to the first question is yes, definitely. And, you know, to your second question, I'm really happy that you are starting the program out, the grant-making program out through an equity lens. And, and I think that's just very important and I'm really happy to see that you are starting there with folks who, who will need that support.
Great. Brady, do you wanna?
I'm gonna say yes, too, number one. And the, the map was really interesting and all the different layers that you, you added. I know that was preliminary, but I have to say that it did appear to me that the entire western side of the city is both, you know, high density and, and high risk. And so that's a big front to be defending. And how do you feel about that? And what are, how much that can we really proactively, you know, mitigate and, and over what time period?
Yeah, that's a very good question and it is quite an undertaking. And I think we're all trying to manage our own expectations and also be clear about what we hope to accomplish in 2024, because it would be, I think, more than we can expect of ourselves to devise a pilot program that would mitigate risk evenly across that western extent of Boulder. So that's, that's difficult because nobody wants to be in the position of picking and choosing which homes get risk reduction first. But to me, the, the, the first and most important layer to look at is where the areas of greatest wild and urban interface risk are, because it's not, it's not all red. And also a key data set that was not shown on that map is just how close the structure footprints are to open space land. Those green dots, the address points were within 100 feet of open space, but some of those are, you know, at 90 or, or 80 feet away. So there will be an emphasis on homes where the vegetation management that open space can perform is going to align most closely with home ignition zone recommendations and provide the most good. So it's not as overwhelming as it looks at first glance, but it is a major undertaking. And we're aiming through the creation of these pilot programs to try to identify this as something that we can sustain and scale to provide a service equitably to accomplish intended objectives.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a tricky sort of communication component to this is that we want to get out there and start trying something and start doing something. And but we also want to give us the space to learn and like, okay, we matched that land management tool with that type of terrain and in this area, maybe it was effective, but it's impossible to scale at any sort of significant level. Or maybe you, we can scale it a lot, but from a fire risk reduction, maybe it didn't do as much as we wanted it to. So we're sort of setting ourselves up in 2024 to pilot, to learn and then to adapt and to scale. So what that means is we're not going to be in front of everybody's backyard in 2024. And so we, we need to sort of temper expectations, but yet we want to have you all be excited about this program. Let the community know that we're going to be out there doing some things that we typically have never done in a concentrated way and that we will learn as we go.
Thanks for those comments. They were good. I was just wondering if, how much have we talked with the affected parties? As far as what we're intending or what we're projecting or what we're seeing? And are, what kind of feedback are we getting or response are we getting in those conversations?
By affected parties, you mean homeowners, wildland, right, and interface?
Yeah.
Think that the Community Risk Reduction Team, they've had the most contact through those detailed home assessments and through previous projects. So Brian, do you have a?
Yeah, I mean, what, what typically happens is we get the call from the homeowner.
the call from the homeowners to say, hey, you know, we want an assessment of our wildfire risk and we go out there to start. You know, best mitigation is done from the home inside to out, right? Have a plan, have your go have, you know, your evacuations thing, all of those things, you know, sign up for notifications. Do your home hardening, do the whole ignition zone, and then we start moving in that twenty, thirty, forty feet. Most of those homes, when we show up, say all of that over there on that side of the fence needs to be cut down, right, which is open space. So what we're trying to do is figure out what is that holistic approach? I think there's so much support with being the homeowners working their way out. They want to see us doing something, but from the fire management, risk management standpoint, open space, cutting trees or cutting back brush on their side of the fence does nothing if the homeowner hasn't done their work as well. So it truly has got to be a partnership between fire and our risk assessments, our response, and the mitigation work that open spaces do. And all those things have to come to culmination. And what really didn't show on the map is there are a lot of places when you get down granular that we can make a difference in one or two or three homes that will prevent that home to home ignition. So it it really is finding those really small places to prioritize and like Dan said, finding where we can scale that out. But I think there's a whole lot of support for this from the homeowners.
Yeah, and in terms of where we're at with our own pilot program is that it's all internal. This is the first time we've even sort of talked about this program publicly and it's on paper right now and it's being developed. We will come back to you once we have sort of the pilot programs flushed out in a little bit more detail of what we're going to do and and where. But right now, we're still in the innovative planning stages.
Yeah, the concern I have is that, you know, and the Marshall Fire was was a good example of that. You know, and in the 2013 flood is another good example until, you know, some of those events actually happen, you know, kind of what the what the community response is, is what questionable or concerning, you know, and it 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 seems like it takes an event like that to actually get people's attention and, you know, and and participation. And so that's why I'm I'm wondering kind of how people are perceiving this effort, at least initially, and hopefully they're they're taking it pretty seriously.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. So I want to share experience from my life for when you guys eventually do put some of these pilot programs down on the ground. But before I do, I want to say, Paul, it's you've been here for fifteen days and and you you did that like an old pro, so good work. The the thing I was going to share is that I live very much in the Wildland Urban Interface, the east shore like Tahoe and Cave Rock. And like tell this story when I want to make fun of the federal government, because when when the Forest Service guys came to torch the piles, they just set them on fire and left. And when the local Tahoe Douglas Fire District guys came, they knocked on every door. And they said, you know, we selected this day to set off our piles on the property we own in adjacency to your house because, you know, it's just the right amount of snow. We got wind blowing out of the basin. You're not going to have the inversion effect. The smoke's not going to choke you out and stuff like that. And by the way, we'll be here until everything's out. And so for all the people who aren't homeowners, you know, I was a tenant at the time, you know, who weren't going to necessarily get all the notifications to to have an ambassador who's actually a fireman come to the front door, you know, knock and tell you what they were doing. Not can we do it? This is what we're doing. It's on our land. We're going to do it. But it gave me a lot of confidence that they knew what they were doing. And I think, you know, as you talk about, like when we were on Wonderland Lake and, you know, we saw those people who share a fence line with open space. It's not a lot of houses to knock on, you know? And so just think about that, that, you know, people respect firemen, firewomen, they, you know, they know that they're professionals. And and it it really helps get the message out and it's stuck with me for the last twenty years, so I'm just adding that to the conversation.
That's such a helpful comment. Thank you and thank you for the compliment, Harmon. We should move on to the next section. And Brian, you might want to stay put because some of the questions about prescribed fire might be good ones for you to weigh in on as well. Leah, the next slide, please. Oh, this one ended up out of order. We can just move past it. Okay, the next topic to discuss is prescribed fire. Next slide, please. So I assume you all have some understanding of the concept of prescribed fire, which is the application of fire to the landscape to accomplish a variety of objectives. And the main one that relates to the topics tonight is hazardous fuels reduction, applying fire in a controlled way to mimic the kind of low-intensity fire that these landscapes adapted with and and need for a variety of reasons. But prescribed fires also used agriculturally for water conveyance and other purposes, ecologically for habitat habitat preservation and restoration, and also usually low-complexity prescribed fire as a means of biomass disposal, often associated with other fuels, treatments. For instance, forest thinning, the construction of slash piles and then burning those when there's snow on the ground is one other application for prescribed fire. Next slide. So there has been a lot of interest in prescribed fire as catastrophic wildfire has been on the rise. I I think it's fair to say most people who are paying attention are interested in how this method for reducing risk is being pursued. And it is an essential land management tool for risk reduction and for accomplishing some of those other objectives. But it's also a very complex pursuit. So first, I would just want to talk about complexity, and that that has a few definitions or applications when talking about prescribed fire. And then how the complexity analysis when considering using prescribed fire to reduce wildfire risk, how these complexities relate to challenges in implementing prescribed fire as proactively or aggressively as we might like to see. And then what some opportunities might be for overcoming those challenges. So when considering applying fire to the landscape, one of the first steps in the process is identifying values at risk. So residential property being an obvious one. But there are many values that can be damaged or adversely affected by fire. So identifying those and then assessing what risk the plan fire could pose to those values. And then assessing the technical difficulty in mitigating the risk to value and also the technical difficulty in pulling off the fire in the first place. So considerations like how dense is the fuel, how complex is the terrain? Is there good access to a site? Can you get sufficient personnel in the right configuration? All of these factors interrelate and give you a sense of how complex the prescribed fire you're considering is. And then that will inform, for one thing, whether it's it's feasible to use prescribed fire in the area you're considering, but also what kind of qualified leadership is required to safely accomplish a prescribed fire and how many and and how qualified all of the fire suppression and management personnel will need to be. Next slide, please. So this is by no means an exhaustive list, but some of the challenges associated with pursuing prescribed fire. And I'll try to talk specifically about the characteristics of City of Boulder, open spaceland. I've identified some of the challenges here, but with each challenge, there is an attendant opportunity to overcome that challenge and also improve our capacity, not just for prescribed fire, but for safe and effective response more generally. So I I would say one of the the largest challenges is political and public understanding and support of prescribed fire. And this really can cut both ways. I think there's as much of a challenge with the the drive to see really aggressive prescribed fire pursued, but also a challenge with fear or concern over unintended consequences stemming from a prescribed fire. And this occurs at both the political and public level. So in our CWPP meeting earlier, we were talking about some of the political will that will be necessary to put fire on the landscape in a meaningful way to accomplish all the objectives we would like to. And that entails some some pretty deep and complicated questions about liability. If if a prescribed fire does not go according to plan about resource sharing, I'll talk in a moment about how rare it is to have the personnel qualified at the high level to accomplish the complex burns we would be thinking about on open space. So those those are some of the political issues and then the public concerns are are fairly obvious. The the fear of a prescribed fire escaping and damaging or destroying property. Smoke impacts are are common concern and complaint. And I'll talk about creating trust in a moment, but some of the opportunities here. I know that there is a lot of attention on this issue, so I think especially with the CWPP projects happening and all these other efforts, it's a great opportunity to have the conversations at every level in the city and in the county and the state to talk about some of the political support and issues that need to be resolved. And then also to really educate and engage the public to talk about the risks, the benefits in those trade-offs. You know, taking smoke as an example. Some smoke in a predictable and controlled way is probably preferable to seriously hazard smoke hazardous smoke impacts from uncontrolled wildfire if if we're not practically managing the land using tools like prescribed fire. So the the bullet point there about creating trust. This connects to something that I've been working on with Brian's staff just in my first few weeks and it can require a lot of planning and the right conditions to pull off large-scale, complex burns, especially in in open space where so much of our land is so highly visible, high-profile, close to communities, very complex areas to to consider burning. So what we're hoping to do, we want to pursue the larger-scale burning to accomplish as much of this as quickly and safely as we can. But to work towards creating public trust by increasing the the pace and the scale of lower-complexity burning for agricultural ecological purposes and smaller-scale hazardous fuels reduction prescribed fire to get people more comfortable with smoke in the air, to expect that and to create opportunities for people to see prescribed fire and to learn about it. So some of the other challenges, qualified leadership and personnel. So leadership is a big one. It requires a lot of training and experience to be qualified as a burn boss who can oversee a complex prescribed fire. Brian, you might have a good answer. There are not very many of these qualified burn bosses operating in Boulder County. And then connecting it back to some of the liability questions or challenges. You know, let's say there was a burn boss in a different agency and we wanted to leverage a partnership to have them supervise a burn on open spaceland. I don't know if anybody is really prepared to answer whether that's permissible or what sort of process would need to be followed to ensure that questions have been answered so that the burn boss would feel comfortable, that city leaders would feel comfortable, et cetera. So that that bottleneck at the top is is a challenge, but an opportunity there is to create more programs to get prescribed fire practitioners, Wildland firefighters on a track to work towards that the burn boss qualification, to have more qualified leaders planning and implementing these burns. The same applies for qualified personnel. Nobody feels comfortable implementing a large-scale broadcast burn if they don't have confidence in everybody who's participating in that as a the person carrying a torch and igniting, and then the people who are responsible for holding the prescribed fire to the the intended boundaries. So we have a lot of qualified Wildland firefighters in Boulder City and in Boulder County, but it's a ma- it's more a matter of building a kind of integrative cohesive program so that if we are all working together on a complex prescribed fire, it's not the first time that we're working with each other that we know how to operate and communicate effectively and and to integrate successfully to accomplish safe prescribed fire. Planning capacity. It's been really encouraging in my few weeks at Open Space, hearing from everybody who works in agriculture about how much prescribed fire is needed there. And then same, Chris Warner and his coworkers, people with more of an interest in ecological benefits prescribed fire, there's so much desire. And it goes to show just how effective prescribed fire is to accomplish so many objectives. But that also requires writing burn plans to see prescribed fire introduced in all the places where it's wanted. And that requires people to write those plans to kind of manage the prioritization, to monitor weather conditions and fuel conditions to to pull together implementation when the the time is right. And then cohesive management and implementation. I I think I already described that in under the the bullet point of qualified personnel, but no one agency, organization in Boulder can do this without the support of all of the partnering agencies and organizations. It's it's too complicated an endeavor to pursue alone. So building that cohesive and integrated group of qualified leaders and qualified firefighters. These are some of the challenges, but they are possible to overcome. But understanding them and working on them collectively is going to be essential to seeing prescribed fire in in the way that most of us hope to. I I won't assume that you're all as eager for prescribed fire as I am, but Leah, next slide. I think we have a opportunity to hear just how you all feel about prescribed fire and again, this presupposes some level of support. So so maybe I'd just modify the question one. You know, do you support prescribed fire? And how how do we win you over if you don't? And how do we create public support more generally if you do? Dave, I know.
Great. Yeah, thanks a lot for that. Does Ward have any comments or thoughts?
Dave, I've had a chance to learn from you over the last couple of years that you are a fan of prescribed fires. And you there, I know it's involved because you also have to get permits from different agencies as well. How do you, how do you, how do you notify folks who might have health issues and might react to smoke if they have like serious asthma con- conditions or something? And and if they know that it's happening, do you say it's a good time to take a vacation somewhere else? Or, you know, what do what do you do just in terms of just letting them know that it's happening, but also letting them know that there's a chance if they do have asthma or something like that, that it could be hard for them?
So all of those things, actually, we have one of the most prolific outreach campaigns up and down the front range when it comes to prescribed fire. Part of that is through the smoke management permitting process. Because we live in the seven-county metro area, they require us to do outreach and notifications. So we do seven days prior, twenty-four hours prior. We also maintain a list of smoke receptive, smoke-sensitive receptors, in other words, individuals that may have asthma or breathing problems that we specifically notify these before prescribed fire. So we we do make all of those outreaches. We put it on the website, we put it on social media that, you know, all of all of those things, we try to get as much word out as possible and and try to, you know, exactly, if you're a smoke-sensitive person, might be a good time to get out of town or here's our constraints. So if you live near, you know, this area, this is where we're going to burn. But a lot of times we get constrained through our smoke permitting process that we can only burn winds out of certain vectors so that we don't impact major, you know, residential areas or city areas.
Gotcha. Because I guess you would let people know that this is a time to keep their windows closed and like close their vents if they if they can't leave and and they need to stay indoors.
Yeah, I think you know.
Yeah, I think you know, I, I think that prescribed fire is an extremely important program. And has a really immeasurable benefits in, in risks as well. So in that regard, from my perspective, there also is a really great educational or community educational component to, you know, kind of targeted areas for prescribed burns. And we talked about this a little at Wonderland where there's an educational value when you're, you know, trying to get the community to not only understand the value of it, but also to understand, you know, the process and kind of wh- what's involved as far as doing it safely and, and competently. And so that probably doesn't fit into the more, you know, landscape level kind of need for prescribed fire. But I still think, you know, some of those instructive educational opportunities are real important. And even if they're, you know, just kind of minor postage stamp, you know, kind of burns for the community to really appreciate and understand. You know, the, the use of fire on the land, that's really important. So I, I would encourage us to keep that in mind as, you know, as we're developing the, the, the program. So thanks again, really a good presentation and I feel real, real good about kind of where things are headed.
Thank you, David. And I think, Brian, would you agree that getting, creating opportunities for the public to, you know, observe these burns and to, you know, provide education and explanation is a opportunity that we should explore?
I think it's one of the most important things we can do to build that public trust is provide those opportunities that, that allow them to learn the process and see all the hoops we jump through and all the control measures we put in place to ensure that it's safe. Cause what typically happens is it's the unsuccessful prescribed fires that make the news, not the successful ones, right? It's the, it's the oops and that's what people are afraid of. So if we can show them over and over again that we can do this safely and effectively, we're going to build that trust and allow for more landscape scale burning.
Great.
Uh, any other comments or thoughts? Harman?
Yeah, I think. I think the marketing of prescribed burns could include the beauty of the landscape when the vegetation comes back. I don't think people realize how pretty it looks. Most of the time, because every spring, you know, the green grasses and the grasslands grow up through all of last year's stubble. And you don't really see the, you don't really see the landscape looking lush. But after a burn, and everybody could see this on Marshall Mesa, after the Marshall Fire, it looked like golf course the next spring. And it was really amazing to see. So it's just something you could kind of add to one of the positives of, of prescribed burns.
That is a great point. I don't know if you saw some of the before and after photos of the Forsyth two burn that the Forest Service accomplished this spring, but just as you say, the if people just imagine, you know, charred trees as the outcome of prescribed fire, there there's a perception issue. And just as you put it, the, the results are quite lovely and also accomplish such important objectives. Thanks for that comment, Harmon.
Well, Dave, I'm going to push us to start our next agenda item before nine.
It's ironic, we had that previous conversation, so.
And I, and I also recommend that we just roll and if somebody needs to get up and use restroom, we get a glass of water, we can do that casually. But instead of taking a break, I, we got one more program to, to bring up. And first of all, thanks, Paul. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Brian. Really appreciate that. And I'm going to invite up Will Keely, our senior ecologist, who will provide us an update, keeping things wild tonight on all things wildlife. And Heather Swanson, I believe, is also participating from Colorado Springs. She is taking care of some family members, but is joining us remotely. So hopefully that technology works. There she is.
Hi, Heather.
Well, it's good to see you.
In control or is that, okay, great. All right.
Hopefully this, this will work. Hi, Will Keely, Senior Wildlife Ecologist with OSMP. We haven't been back, we haven't been to the board in a couple of years. So we thought it would be great to provide you a program update. Should I wait or should I? So Heather, can you hear us and is everything good on your end? Yeah, your audio is a little little funky, not too bad. So Heather, you are taking this slide?
Yep. And let me know if, if I'm not coming through clearly, I'll see what I can do. My headphones died, so unfortunately I don't have those. Yeah. So hi, everybody. Nice to see you remotely. So it, it's kind of fun to get to talk about the other many hundreds of species that the Wildlife Ecology Program works with on open space. We obviously almost every month are talking about a single species with you and with the public. But there's a whole lot of quiet work happening to manage the really rich and diverse wildlife communities that call open space home. So our wildlife staff is made up of a number of both standard and temporary staff, all of whom are, are have a background in wildlife ecology. And so we have three temporary staff. Lauren Bubow is our wildlife crew member. We have Christina Fairbanks and Micah Yarborough, both, both of which are assistant crew leads or technician twos. Then we have Tori, our parade dog ecologist, who you've gotten to see a lot of the last few months. Christian Noons and Ryan Prior Reshi are two of our sort of more generalist wildlife ecologists. And then Will Keely is our senior wildlife ecologist. And together he and I sort of manage and oversee the wildlife program, although certainly far more of that is, has fallen on him as I've been in this interim deputy director position. Next. And so the, the Wildlife Ecology Program at Open Space really covers a broad suite of types of projects related to wildlife and, and how wildlife factors into a, a lot of the decision making at Open Space and a variety of things that we do. And so the Wildlife Ecology Staff completes a really robust monitoring program system wide on a, a large variety of species, about 12 to 15 different projects that are completed annually. A lot of those during the summer, but then there are others that are also completed year round. We also sponsor and undertake research. I'm going to talk about one of the research projects today. But we also work with outside researchers from C U, C S U, or other organizations that are doing research on open space. We also sponsor several volunteer programs. Will's going to talk about one of those with the Raptors. But we have several programs that, that monitor wildlife that our wildlife staff support and work with the volunteers on. We do sort of on the ground habitat restoration for some species and other, other management actions to help support habitat for sensitive species on open space and mountain parks. And, and Will's going to highlight one of those habitat restoration examples. We also support a pretty broad suite of different department initiatives and projects. And I actually, a pretty, pretty good chunk of the wildlife work plan is supporting projects that are being led by other groups within the department. So offering support for, for planning efforts, providing both data and expertise to help in those projects, helping to support infrastructure development and planning for that, trails, trailheads, things like that. Helping to provide information to inform acquisitions. So loo- looking at what, what natural and wildlife values potential acquisitions may have, which then can help the department prioritize the most important ones. And then broadly supporting habitat restoration. So several of you were out at the Lower Boulder Creek Restoration Site and wildlife staff were involved almost on a daily basis in helping to support that project and kind of interface between the, the work that's going on and protecting some of the, the sensitive habitats and species that, that occur there prior to and after restoration. And then also helping to take the lead on regulatory compliance for a number of wildlife related federal regulations, including the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, and the Endangered Species Act. Next.
We were with you was 21, so two new board members. I think Michelle and Dave were here, but we tried to jam pack at least five or six case studies into our presentation. We'll do raptor monitoring and habitat management first and then stop for questions on that topic. If you have clarifying questions throughout, please don't hesitate to, to stop us. And then obviously at the end, we'll take more questions on, on the rest of the project. So I'm going to jump into Raptors. So as you may know, the flatirons provide a high quality habitat for cliff nesting raptors. Some, you know, some of the best habitat in the Western United States, but they also offer world-class climbing opportunities. So the Cliff Nesting Raptor Program is one of the prime examples at Open Space of balancing multiple charter purposes. So you'll see the peregrine falcon there in the top nesting golden eagle on the bottom. But I, I put in the slide or a couple of, of photos of also the grassland raptors that we manage with, with area closures. And, and largely a, a, a good balance of visitor access as well as managing staff activities around those nest sites. So here are the six species that we manage for and the conservation status of each of those species. They all are considered tier one or tier two in Colorado Parks and Wildlife State Wildlife Action Plan, which was published in 2015. And they're all considered species of special concern in the Boulder County Complain. So all of them have some status either statewide or locally. But also the two eagle species, as Heather alluded to, are also federally protected under the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. So as I alluded to, all raptors are protected under the MBTA. But bald and golden eagles are specifically federally managed under the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. So the area closures that, that we institute are largely following state and federal guidelines, both for spatial and temporal buffers. So here you see on the closure durations for the species that we manage. Dave and Michelle, you may remember last year, we came to you with the Golden Eagle Closure Update that moved the closure from February 1st to December 15th to align more with federal and state guidelines. So the individual closures themselves are form fit, so we take into a bunch of different topography, a bunch of different things to create each individual closure. And, and these are just some of the factors that we consider when implementing a new closure. Line of sight, cliff height, field observations from the crew, where the, where the birds roost, where they nest, obviously. And we do solicit input from the climbing community. A lot of the, a lot of the policies that we implement align with published stuff from the Access Fund. Up top there is climbing and raptors. You can probably read the other writing underneath, but it's a handbook for adaptive raptor management. And this was published by Access Fund in 2020, so very recent. I mean, it really outlines kind of what we do also and it aligns with, with our management practices. So just as in an example, on the right, you see blue circles and those are half mile buffers. And that's what Colorado Parks and Wildlife recommends for the species that we manage. And then in yellow, simple hatch, the actual closures that we institute, we implement based on the factors that I described in the slide. The slide previous. So you can see if, if we were actually going to use CPW's published spatial buffers and in, implement them, you know, all of the flatirons would be shut. So we do use view shed, we do use line of sight, we, we try to use all these factors to protect the birds, but also, you know, limit access restrictions. So some of the management needs during these raptor closures that we do almost on a daily basis during, during the season is coordinate staff access to minimize disturbances. You know, there's veg management that happens, has to happen in grassland areas for let, list A and, and class B species that, that need to be eradicated. So we do work with staff to access some of these areas. And we do consult with biologists from Colorado Parks and Wildlife as well as US Fish and Wildlife Service. When we need to go into some of these areas, especially for the golden and bald eagles. And, and so that would be, as I described, the non-native vegetation management, habitat restoration for the Lower Boulder Creek Restoration Project was, was something that we needed to consult on, ag operations, water delivery and prey dog removal. I wanted to highlight the role of volunteers in this program. It's one of the, one of the most important aspects of this program. They consistently provide almost 1500 hours, 1500 hours worth of work. And so you see in 2023, we had 25 volunteers at about 13 sites, 12 sites and spent about 1500 hours. And so just as a comparison, us as staff, we're out there 320 hours. So that's a fivefold increase of what staff can staff can implement. So the volunteers pro- provide the really vital information for adaptive management of these seasonal closures. So what we do is we, we attempt to lift all the closures that are on unoccupied territories around May 15th. And the climbers look towards this as a date where, you know, we use social media. We use press releases to indicate which closures are open for climbing. And this is just a list from the past eight or so years of how many we've lifted early due to non-occupied territories. And the, the information that we collect as well as volunteers collect have also helped us extend seasonal closures. Usually due to re-nesting, after spring snowstorm, some of these falcons re-nest, which sets their clock back and extends seasonal closures into August. And this has happened maybe two times in the past 15 years that I've been here. But we've had great success with updating maps and getting the word out to the climate community and have had really good success with, with protecting the birds in that sense. A quick one here, so 2016 was our 30 year anniversary for raptor monitoring and now we're at 37, so time does fly. We did a video produced on the raptor program. We had Begon King come out and interview long time volunteer staff. A color, a couple of Colorado Parks and Wildlife biologists. And this is just the URL that's available on our website if you'd like to watch the six minute video. So, you know, with the 30 years that we've been collecting data, we're able to provide a pretty extensive data set. So here for different time periods, there's a lot of information here. I don't expect you to digest it all. Kind of point to what I'm looking at in a, in a minute. But just to define the metrics, these are all raptor ecology metrics, a number of nesting attempts per year, average nesting success and then average productivity. So we can kind of compare and contrast these metrics from other land management agencies across the US. So you see 1990 to 2001 to 15, 16 to 21, and then the, the last two years I'd like to highlight because it's been a bit of an anomaly. So looking at the two falcon species, we do see really stable population maintenance such that you have high productivity, high nesting success. And then around 2016, 2015, maybe you kind of see the tables turn where we have more peregrines than prairies. Whereas we usually had more prairies and peregrines. And this is becoming a little bit of a Western trend. We've, we've talked with other Western raptor biologists and they're seeing peregrines out compete prairies. And it's going to be something that we certainly keep an eye, an eye on. But the tw- the last two years have been really bad for falcons and, and the spring snow. It's, it's a couple of rain events that have really set them back. But, you know, we're obviously going to keep an eye on the low productivity and no, low nesting success that we've seen, especially with prairie falcons in the past five or so years. But I did want to highlight, you know, we do have stable maintenance, a, a, a stable population. Productivity and nesting success does show that the population is stable for all four of these species. And I think what, what it kind of comes down to is we've done a good job of, you know, protecting nesting sites during seasonal times. We've done a good job of protecting foraging areas. You know, a lot of these birds do forage on prairie dog colonies. And so that is an added benefit of protecting land that is. On the grasslands and and containing and supporting prairie dogs. But it also, at least the program does support. High-quality visitor use and recreational opportunities. So. Couple of stories there with the prairie falcons and the and the peregrine falcons, but. You know, it is something that has worked really well and does have a lot of support in the climate community. We do lift closures on unoccupied territories and we're seeing a stable maintenance, stable population. So. We've gotten calls from Marin County Parks and Wildlife. Pinnacles National Park. A lot of different land management agencies wondering how we keep volunteers, how we manage climbers, how we manage visitors and. And it's something that we're pretty, we're pretty proud of. Oh, when, yeah, I did want to put this in. So you know, obviously, there's stuff that we can manage. Human access to to nesting sites, human access to foraging locations. But we can't manage spring snow, we can't manage rain events that that knock down. Falcons because they they nest on on. Ledges instead of in potholes. Well, one thing that has been interesting is the. Prevalence of chicken bugs, a parasite. That have been found more often in eagle nests and prairie falcon scrapes. Than ever before, and they they're starting to attribute this to climate change because. Years ago, they thought that the winter conditions knocked back the parasites and because the climate is changing. To the warmer. The chicken bugs are really starting to live in the nest. And so. The chicken bugs suck blood out of the nestlings. They obviously have deleterious effects on the physiology, but they also. Make them fledge earlier. Jump out of the nest because they're so. Parasitized. So that is obviously a lower fledgling rate if they're flying before they know how to fly. So that was a brief. Seven-minute. Conversation about our raptor program. I don't, I don't know if the board has specific questions about the program. If if you don't, that's great. We can move on to the next, but I did want to pause here in case you had some.
I've got a comment and question first. I just want to say thank you to everybody who. I think, you know, as a former. A professional climbing advocate, I think this this is best-in-class program and and I like to think it's got a virtuous cycle when the climbers see. Closures lifted. It promotes confidence that the closures that are in place are there for a good reason, compliance goes up. The culture of compliance and 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 the climbing community being huge fans of these birds themselves. Goes up. So it's just, and I think it's great that other agencies are reaching out to us and that map about the. Where where you know, the circles and then what what happens when you take view shed and everything into account and how. How razor sharp the closures are, just. Best in class. So well done. And my question is, can you pronounce the scientific name for chicken bugs?
I even took four years of Latin and I still couldn't. Too many A's and E's together. But I should have, I should have tried.
Will, so do, have we identified chicken bugs specifically in nest sites on open space?
Not us. The first time that that we heard about it was at a Wildlife Society Conference two years ago, and then I went to the Raptor Conference in Albuquerque this year, and there's a lot more papers. On it. So they have climbers climb into the nests and spray permethrin. Into the nest, which is not on our approved list of pesticides. But that kills the chicken bugs and they think that that in a small scale like we have with thirteen territories instead of. What they try to do in the Snake River, Birds of Prey with two hundred and fifty territories would be. Something that would be useful. Because we have seen. Nestlings really agitated by parasites. I mean, they're. Preening all the time, they're pulling their feathers out, you can see that the adults. So we think that we've seen evidence of chicken bugs in some of these nest sites.
Are we considering? That?
We would have to go through the IPM process to get that approved first. But something that, yes, I'd like to begin discussions on.
Great. I think we're good.
Okay, great. Thanks. Moving on.
All right, so I think back to me, I am just very quickly gonna give you an update on the bear habitat evaluation and and that's. That evaluation being done as as it relates to seasonal on-leash. On specific trails on open space. And we've been talking about this. Over the last year or two, and I don't have anything new to present tonight, but I just wanted to. Go quickly through where we're at in the process, so you know when you will hear some more information on this. So. Last spring, we went through a GIS analysis of bear habitat and using that and looking at where our seasonal closures were. We made some modifications in the Chautauqua area over near Gregory Canyon. So. There was one section of trail that was removed from the seasonal leash suite of areas. We expanded one section. Adjacent to that to to better reflect the section of trail that that had high-quality bear habitat and. That that was something that we brought to you as a written update in August of twenty-three. So you may remember that. And so moving forward next. This fall, we have completed the fieldwork for. Collecting information on riparian habitat and its quality for bears. Across the foothills drainages where we have trails. So looking at things like. Fruit-ing or mast-ing shrubs that that provide high-quality food. Looking at the level of cover in those drainages for bears and things like that. And so we're gonna be using that data then to evaluate the proximity of trails and where those overlap with high-quality habitat. Overlay that with our existing set of seasonal on-leash restrictions and then decide what what that data might. Suggest and you know, some possible modifications could be removing locations where. The regulation doesn't really seem to be targeted towards the right areas. Maybe shrinking trail segments, again, where where we don't have the overlap to to really indicate that the current regulation makes sense. And then if there are other areas where on the flip side, maybe some really high-quality habitat areas in close proximity to to trails are not included. Potentially extending some of those trail segments or adding new locations. Next. And so we'll be bringing that back to you. The the habitat analysis, so we can present that in far more detail and then any recommended changes that we may be bringing forward. Likely in the late spring next year. Next.
So I'm gonna jump to our Northern Leopard Frog Habitat Management and Monitoring Programs. Northern Leopard Frogs are a Western population. Well, they're they're North American population, but their Western population is in severe decline. They are a tier-one species, a greatest conservation need from CPW, and. They attribute this to numerous numerous interacting threats, habitat loss, obviously. There's kit-ridden fungus. I don't know if you've heard of that, but that is a fungus disease that. Impacts the ability for frogs to respire through their skin. A non-native species, especially the the cattails, which I'll get to in a minute, but also bullfrogs and predaceous fish. And that changes in hydrologic regime, which which favor bullfrogs because they need to overwinter as tadpoles. Whereas all native frogs metamorphose in one season. So you see a picture of a bullfrog on the upper right with a bird in its mouth. They're pretty voracious predators. They compete with northern leopard frogs. Both directly and indirectly. Directly, obviously, for predation, but indirectly for resources. We began our monitoring program in two thousand and six with a GIS design that that chose forty wetlands to survey. And have expanded up to a hundred and forty-one wetlands as of this year. So the our our monitoring drives and and the distribution and abundance that we find via our monitoring drives, our habitat restoration and and management programs. So. You know, we we have expanded the number of wetlands, whether we've expanded them to to better wetlands or or not is. Is different, but because we've tried to go more system-wide to find more frogs and. I'll show you in in a minute a graph that we we've certainly found more frogs by expanding the number of sites. But we've also been really successful in our habitat management, which I'd like to discuss a little bit. So the techniques that we use to restore habitat to improve conditions for northern leopard frogs are non-native vegetation removal. And planting in native vegetation, which I'll get into in a bit here. We fence out cattle on a prescriptive basis. Sometimes cattle. In in the correct timing is good. Sometimes it's not so good if it's if it's too long or too many AUMs. We do remove predaceous fish with the help of Colorado Parks and Wildlife in select ponds. To improve habitat conditions and we manage bullfrogs at select sites.
So what fish?
Bass, bass and blue gills are the are the two mains.
Two main, non-native.
Non-native sport fish. Trout, yeah, all non-native sport fish. So here's one of our case studies. It's tough to see here, but this is a dead. Monotypic stand of cattails. And so what we'd like to do is open this pond up for open water and to plant new low-emergent vegetation, because that's what. Leopard frogs prefer to attach their egg masses to. And so what we've done is we've come in there with underwater weed whips. We've done a couple all-staff workdays. We've. Asked the trail staff and the and the forestry staff to help out because it does take a village to to do this type of work. But really, we've had very good success. So here you see four or five people. Three of them in the in the front have underwater weed whips. They're reciprocating saws that are kind of for midwestern lakes to. Reduce seed, you know, the the algal weed. And so they'll take down the the cattails and then you have somebody behind them of pulling that out and that gets pulled towards a a. He's having machinery that loads it onto a dump truck. But here's the the after picture, and so you could see how much more open water. This is a spring-fed pond near NREL, just south of Highway one twenty-eight. And this was done in the late winter or late fall, early winter. And just the next year, while you can't see with this, but we had three leopard frog egg masses. Growing through, growing on or attached to the low-emergent vegetation. And here's a little close-up of what leopard frog egg mass looks like. They're globular, round, black, black eggs. Based on water temperature, they usually take. Between two and four weeks to hatch and and then they're tadpoles. This was Springbrook. This is near the Lindsay area, near the Fowler Trail. This was a cattail stand, so about an arm's length thick. You could see a technician. Probably dangerously standing in the middle of the cattail mat in the left picture. But it was, it was underwater and or it was, I was growing on top of water, so you could actually move it like a water pad. It was pretty interesting, but it was. We measured the thickness, it was probably the thickness of your arm, so we needed an excavator. To take the. To remove the floating cattail mat and. The picture doesn't. Project very well on on the television screen, but you can see on the right-hand side the open water that was created by removing that cattail mat. And then two years later, we had leopard frog egg masses in that pond also. So. Some pretty interesting things about direct management and removal of these cattails. You know, these are close to known leopard frog breeding sites, so you're kind of connecting the dots and improving habitat close to. Known sites, but you know, they are very terrestrial. We've we've marked frogs and they've moved one point six kilometers in three nights. So. They moved pretty far without a rain event. So they they do move upwind a lot. Just a a quick one, because I I know that you heard about Ready to Work. This was at the Erdel Property, which you all visited with the Lower Boulder Creek Restoration Project. And you could see almost six or seven people in the front there. Working the weed whips, people bringing it, raking it back. To the heavy machinery that loads it into the dump and you could just see how much cattail we were removing on that day. I think we we took twelve tons of cattail out from that particular wetland site. And just as an aside, Western takes that for free because it's it's organic. So this is from two thousand and six, when we began through twenty-three and the number of leopard frog breeding sites. Just as another aside, OSMP supports all of the. Contains all of the breeding sites for northern leopard frogs in all of Boulder County. So. We're working with our partners at Boulder County Parks and Open Space to help them. With these sort of techniques for habitat restoration in the hopes that. Their adjacent land can also become leopard frog breeding sites, but. They they only breed on open space in public lands. I did want to point out, this is when our habitat restoration efforts began, and you can see the uptick in the number of breeding sites just based. On our, what we think based just on our habitat restoration. Efforts. So Heather, you're on mule deer.
Yep. So I'd said we were gonna talk about one of the research projects that we've been involved in and. This is just gonna be a very light touch on this, and and this is probably a conversation for a future meeting at some point, but. Working with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Open Space Wildlife Staff did a cooperative study looking at chronic wasting disease. In mule deer, the the first study was done in two thousand and five through two thousand and eight. And then we repeated a lot of the data collection in twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. And that really allowed us to look at at prevalence of chronic wasting disease and population dynamics over that. About ten-year span of time between the two studies as well as predation pressure. And and one of the things that we found both times is that. Mountain lions are very effective at removing chronic wasting disease positive deer from the from the population. So it's kind of an interesting. Interesting dynamic and and like I said, probably a more detailed. Conversation for another meeting. But when we did the the study in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one. We took advantage of the fact that we were capturing mule deer and fitted a number of the deer. With GPS radio collars. So you can see that buck on the left is carrying a radio collar. Next. And so over the the span of that time period, we had approximately fifty deer with collars. A a far higher number of does than bucks. Buck collars are a little bit challenging because the the size of a buck's neck changes really substantially between the fall rut season and the rest of the year. So. Having a collar that can expand and then go back. Through the different seasons is challenging, but we we did have a handful of bucks, but about fifty deer total. And so the collars were collecting location information every two hours and most of the collars, the batteries lasted for. For two years and then those were removed. They had what's called a drop-off mechanism. That's actually a remotely triggered mechanism that kind of opens a clamp on the collar, so they fall off. When their their useful life is over. And so what that does is gives us just an enormous amount of data. So. We have two hundred, over two hundred and eighty-four thousand data points resulting from the information that the collars collected and of that. Well over two hundred thousand of those points are usable for data analysis. Some of them, depending on the. The location of the deer in the satellite coverage, you know, the the accuracy was low. So so some weren't quite. Worthy of inclusion, but it's still a huge data set that's that's going to allow us to look at sort of habitat use, movement, some of those types of dynamics on open space. Next. And so here is just kind of an example of the type of data when you when you take that spreadsheet and actually project it spatially for an individual deer. This is, this is a buck. That you can see spends most of his time sort of in the neighborhoods west of, west of Broadway and. In in areas up, you know, up to the flatirons and. The difference here, you'll see this on the next map as well, and this is kind of a fine detail, but. There are two different ways to measure sort of home range. And so. The the pinkish-orange color, at least that's what it looks like on my screen, is is sort of where the majority of observations fit. And then. That blue color is where. That deer has really concentrated time, so that that's kind of the core part of the home range and then the broader area that it uses through time. Next. And then this is just an example of a doe. Somewhat similar location, but a little bit further southwest from where that buck was. And you know, one thing that you can see just looking at these two is that these deer are not covering a lot of ground. They've got fairly small parts of open space that they're using year-round. And so that that's kind of an interesting dynamic that you certainly don't see in all populations of mule deer. So. Neat stuff we're gonna be looking at into the future. Next. And then if you take a whole bunch of of deer and you overlay them with each other, this is kind of the picture that you get. There's definitely an error in the middle with that round turquoise ones. We've got to figure out what that is when we produce this map. You can see the different colors, each one is a different deer. And so this then allows us to see. Which deer spending time where, if they are selecting for specific habitat, how they're moving, how they might be interacting with each other. So just a wide variety of questions that that we're working through the analysis of right now. So we'll certainly be returning with some. Some real results on that, but I I just wanted to. Kind of let you know that 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 data collection is complete and we're we're working on the analysis.
Heather, is that a map of the fifty collared deer?
This may be. This may be all fifty or I think it might be close to all fifty of them. Yeah.
Oh.
Yep. And obviously, in some places, you've got multiple uh colors on top of each other. Especially does have pretty tight knit family groups, and we may have had more than one collar in those groups. So you you often have home ranges that um look pretty similar between those individuals that that tend to stick together. So um there's a lot of overlap and layering that's hard, hard to make out for sure at this scale. Next.
So I wanted to um introduce you to something that we've just piloted on the past couple of years on the kind of sound skeeps front. There there was a master plan strategy to reduce impact from noise light and nearby land uses. And this guy's thinking about um measuring ambient noise on open space. So we had a pilot project to learn more about ambient noise. Um and we chose two sites, both in in state natural areas, one in the South Boulder Peak area, the Mountain Park State Natural Area. Now you see a photo here of the um uh passive recorder um in the Damon property on your Bison Drive. And also at at White Rocks. And uh we don't do this analysis. We contracted out with the folks that do the same stuff uh for the National Park Service, the Natural Sounds, Nice Skies Division. And the Listening Lab at Colorado State does all of that type of work. And so they they take the twenty-eight days of recording, um they take eight days of uh three weekdays and three weekends or four weekends or something like that, and then listen to every ten seconds and encode the sound. So pretty interesting stuff. And again, comparable to what NPS does. So um we're able to look at what we have versus what um they've found in national parks. And so uh what you see here is in blue, um hour on the X axis um from zero all the way to twenty-three. Um blue is uh commercial jet noise and pink is propeller noise. This is at the South Boulder Creek site. And here is the kind of uh daylight hours from, I guess, seven to five. And you see kind of um on the Y axis, the percent of time that it was audible during those recordings. Um this is just kind of scratching the surface of what um the analysis looks like. I think we posted the report on our website if you're interested to to dive into it. Um but interesting here, you know, about forty percent prop noise, that's uh or forty percent commercial jet noise during those DIA hours, those early morning hours. DIA, DIA has a direct flight kind of over this site. So unbeknownst to us, it it kind of tracked a lot of the early morning flights coming from the airport. Um but you see the the prop plane noise kind of at fifteen up to twenty percent. But the White Rocks one, um during that same timeframe, again, you see blue in commercial jet. But the the amount of prop uh propeller plane noise over White Rocks um between seven and five was pretty um sounding. Almost getting up to seventy percent of the time recorded, the time analyzed, there is a propeller um in the background. So this was um interesting to us because there's a bald eagle nesting near White Rocks. We do uh public guided hikes um in that area, and this was some of the impetus that MPS does in their analysis. Because they measure at what distance um is their program interrupted based on the noise. And so that's one of the metrics they use in terms of decibels and stuff like that.
So do we think that's a result of proximity to the Boulder Airport?
We do, yeah. I mean, it it does make sense. Uh we've had, we have seen, you know, the airport's two and a half miles away. Um but it does seem like the first thing that commonly, the first thing that prop plane pilots do is fly over White Rocks because it's a nice place to fly over. It's it's a natural area. Um you know, it's open space, but we do, we have seen a preponderance and an increase in in prop noise over over that area. Um so some of the applications that we're just kind of starting to learn more about is obviously comparing it with national parks. Because it's the same analysis that um National Parks Cascades, Zion um Glacier, that National Parks employ. Um Rocky Mountain is is a good comparable um national park. But uh we've also uh provided this information to the Boulder Airport managers um in their co- in their current community conversation. Um and and perhaps we'll get to a point where we can start talking about noise budgets. We're not there yet. We just provided this to um to the airport um team uh in the community conversations. But um the thing that we've are somewhat interested in especially is the impact of noise on wildlife. Um it's tough to study. It's expensive to correlate. Um but there are um a a growing number of papers that tie uh chronic noise with deer lecherious effects on birds breeding. Because they can't hear their uh male sing uh in increased or decreased predatory search time. Because you can't hear the predator behind you approaching. So a lot of interesting things coming out of the um the field of noise impacts on wildlife. One of the uh new um analytical methods that I'll just briefly touch on, because I know we're running a bit late, is the um the amount of time that recorded time on these on these units that is between the bandwidth of um audible bird song. And so audible bird song is what they call the bioacoustic range, so it's between two and eight kilohertz. So if you deploy these units um at specific sites, you can analyze the amount of recorded time between these two bandwidths. And what you, what they've developed is this acoustic complexity index. And so we've tried this um last year a couple of times and and this year at a couple of different sites. At, you know, five mornings during bird song, which is four thirty to nine thirty in the morning in June. And uh what we've come up with and when we analyzed it was some pretty interesting stuff. So here are the five sites. Uh Erdel, um uh Lindsay Jeffco, which is up up near the Fowler Trail. Lippincott Ranch, which we purchased a couple of years back with Jefferson County Parks and Open Space. Springbrook, um which is also near Lindsay, near the uh Fowler Trail, and then Monica, which is out in the grasslands. But you see here, the mean um acoustic um complexity index is different among these five sites. So again, we're just kind of playing around with this stuff. It's a really novel way to look at um biodiversity and acoustic complexity. And uh maybe you will, you'll hear more about this at a later date, but we do plan on continuing this. We have continued it in summer twenty-three. We just haven't analyzed most of the data yet.
All right, and I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. Um but I I did want to talk just really quickly and sort of give a status update on some of the work that is going on with the Prebels Meadow Jumping Mouse. And I did um present to the board, I think it was last year, with quite a bit of detailed information about prebels. And I'm not going to go into that level of detail tonight. But um Prebels Meadow Jumping Mouse is a threatened species um listed under the Endangered Species Act. It's certainly one of the species that we're talking about out at South Boulder Creek. Um it is what's considered a riparian oblique, which means they're only found in areas um adjacent to and near streams with well-developed riparian vegetation. Um and they occupy some of the foothills and plains drainages on O S M P, especially around the the South Boulder Creek um area. And we have um habitat along South Boulder Creek and Springbrook that is um designated at the federal level as critical habitat. Next. And so um I and other staff have been involved recently in what's called a site conservation team. And a site conservation team is something that U S Fish and Wildlife has been piloting over the last few years as a way to involve stakeholders um to take the lead in efforts to determine um how best to recover a species. Rather than federal biologists putting together plans and then just putting them out for comment by stakeholders. Next. And so um these site conservation teams are um organized around the watershed level. So we're sitting within the Saint Rain watershed. And so our watershed includes habitat for prebels along the Saint Rain and along South Boulder Creek. So the Saint Rain is largely on Boulder County Parks and Open Space property, as well as some private property. And then Sa- South Boulder Creek lies um mostly on our property, again with with some um private property along that stretch. Next. So the goal of the site conservation team, um it really revolves around guidance in the species recovery plan. And so the the Saint Rain um watershed is designated to include what's considered one medium recovery population. And what that means is essentially a population of approximately five hundred mice. And based on typical densities, that that's about eleven miles of contiguous habitat or stream. Um stream habitat should support about five hundred mice if it's of sufficient quality. So really, the the team was tasked with finding an eleven mile stretch of creek that we wanted um Fish and Wildlife to designate as um the recovery population for the Saint Brain watershed. Next. And so really, the the goal of this is to contribute to contribute to the recovery and hopefully someday the delisting of the species if if they can be recovered um across their range. Next. And so um one really important thing about these site conservation teams and designating a recovery population is that it's really centered around conservation and restoration recommendations. And it it doesn't carry with it any new regulatory implications. So just because a stream is considered a recovery population, it would be, it would be um regulated just as any other population um of Prebels Meadow Jumping Mice. Next. And so um really, there are potential resources for monitoring and restoration that that are hopefully going to become available at the federal and state level um for populations that have been um that that are are designated as recovery population. So that's one of the benefits of going through the effort is to to tap into some of those additional resources to support conservation and restoration. Next. And so um this, the team that is made up of um all of the the local land management agencies. So um City of Longmont, City of Boulder, Boulder County Parks and Open Space, and others, as well as um uh People Associated Water Rights Users, ditch owners, ditch companies, um local landowners, just a variety of interested stakeholders um have decided to move for forward with nominating both the Saint Brain as well as South Boulder Creek. Um this hasn't been done in other um watersheds, although only one watershed has has yet completed their site conservation teamwork. Um but in this case, we have sort of a a unique opportunity to actually um nominate two different populations in one watershed, um which will help us with redundancy in populations. So so one thing with prebels that we're learning as more and more monitoring happens is there seems to be um a lot of variability in population measurements from year to year and some some fairly major cyclical swings in populations. And so having two populations within the Saint Brain will hopefully allow us to make sure that at least one at any given time has a a healthy population of mice. And both of those populations largely lie on um already protected public land where um what would, you know, the recommendations that would come with a recovery population are consistent with the management that's already happening there. Next. So currently, the team um is drafting a population nomination packet and working on additional outreach to to stakeholders who may not have been quite so involved. And so that nomination package will then go to the recovery team and Fish and Wildlife for their um review and hopefully approval. Next. Um yes, so that, yep, submitted Fish and Wildlife. And then um the next steps then are to create a restoration and conservation plan. Um and a- again, just additional outreach to make sure that all landowners and interested community members are aware of the program. Next. And then um robust monitoring is part of this so that we know whether the the population is actually supporting the mice that we're hoping that it is. So that would likely start on South Boulder Creek in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, depending on how quickly um Fish and Wildlife and the recovery team is able to review and um hopefully accept the nomination of those two stream reaches. And so I will definitely come back to you as that process um moves more towards completion. Um but that's kind of the status update for now. And Will, I will turn this over to you to to um explain this picture, but I think that's all that we really have to present. So we can answer any questions that that you all have.
Yeah, so that this is a um another new um toy that we've purchased. This is a thermoscope. And so what we've had to do in order to count Townsend's bigger bats at Mallory and Harmon Cave is crawl in there, try to be as quiet as possible. Shine a red light at them because they don't, they don't like white light, but red is okay. Use binoculars to try to count and get out with the with thirty seconds of time. And um that was getting more and more difficult. And we bought this thermoscope to take photos. And then um this is a a photo of the two clumps at um Harmon Cave. And um our wildlife staff was very eager to start counting years. And so that's how we got to fifty-nine individuals, because you could count uh the number of of years on on thermal scope.
That is really cool.
So I know we're late, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Heather is too.
All right, and any questions or?
I'd like to ask two rapid fire questions, because I know everyone else is on here. Uh one is the mule deer data. That's super cool. Is that base science or is that actionable? Are there actually management? Like, what are we doing with that?
Yeah, so I mean, there are a couple of different answers to that. So there's, so one component of the research is around the chronic wasting disease and the population dynamics that are going on. And that that's actually something that um we've been discussing with Parks and Wildlife over over the last ten years and continue to discuss sort of the implications of those findings. And like I said, I I may come back to you or maybe do a written update with some some more of the summary of that. Both of those pop, both of those studies have have been wrapped up and published, so that information's um all readily available. Um as far as the habitat, yeah.
Heather, Brady might then know what chronic.
No, I know what it is. You don't? Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I I mean, I'll give you the Cliff's Notes version. Over that ten, ten years, um the prevalence of chronic wasting disease stayed um very, very similar. It's very high in that population, but it stayed about the same. And the population um remained miraculously stable. I mean, within one or two animals um from our mark recite count. So um that that's kind of the Cliff's Notes version, but there there's actually kind of a lot more going on behind the scenes there that is sort of where the discussions about are there any next steps come in. So anyway, an in- interesting discussion for when it's not nine forty-five at night, which I'd love to have at some point. Um and then with the habitat use, you know, I think we're going through those analyses and um we'll have to kind of see. I I mean, I think that that we, that's also a data set that might be um something that that in the future we would have a management question and that could help inform that management question. So it wasn't collected to um, you know, answer any pressing questions in that area. It was more opportunistic, given that we were already capturing the deer um and and so could put the collars on. But but I think has probably broad potential management implications, um you know, if if we want to use it.
I'll save my second question for another time.
You sure?
Well, I was, okay. So the the leopard frog habitat, why do we have to remove all the cattails with? It it are, have they been displaced into places where they're, it's too, the cattails are too dense? Or did the cattails change over time? Like, what 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 was, what did it look like for them a hundred years ago? Obviously, there weren't a lot of people here, but what what changed?
Oh, good question. It's the hydrolog- um hydro regime is is what kind of causes it. And if there is a low water year, the cattails set seed and um grow from seed because there's now more um exposed saturated soil. But they're also tuberous, and so they they grow um through their tubers and shoot new shoots out. And so the easy way to do it is if you cut them under underwater, they and inundate them, they drown because they need to breathe, they need to respire through their air stocks. And so that's why you're able, one, one, one cutting. And if if they're, if the dry, if the cut stocks are inundated for, say, four weeks, all of the cattails die. And so what we try to do is then plant bull rush, some uh taller stature, emergent vegetation that's thinner and doesn't grow as aggressively as cattails. And then kind of uh sedges that are low emergent vegetation and try to repopulate the ponds with those.
And Will, I would just add that the hydrologic regime regime has changed from historical um where we have far more permanent water that supports the cattails. So if you looked a hundred years ago, m- most of those wouldn't have supported cattails like they do now.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, the, I'm sure the frogs a hundred years ago were were breeding in Oxbow Lakes from natural riverine sources and not in stock ponds.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you both Will and and Heather. And I just want to say that uh the Wildlife Program is one of the exemplary programs of the department. When when I first started, there was no Wildlife Program and there were no Wildlife Ecologists. And the program development over the last thirty years has really been a testament to the staff um that has developed the program. We've had exemplary staff um and many of you and them uh have stayed a long time. And it's a real testament, not only to your expertise, but to your commitment. And um we appreciate it. It it's it's a tremendous program.
Yeah, thanks, Will. Thanks, Heather. Um I would just want to wrap it up by uh kind of connecting staff to some of the uh uh information that we talked to tonight. Because uh we are going to uh be saying goodbye to uh one of our nearest and dearest staff members um uh through retirement, and that is Lisa Dearoff. Uh some of you may know, but she's been with the department for nearly thirty years. And in fact, she was instrumental. She's now the senior manager of our education and outreach team. And she was intermin- uh instrumental in beginning and helping to grow our volunteer program. In fact, has connection to growing our uh monitoring programs for raptor, bat, and frogs. So a great connection to what Will was saying. Um and over the years, she's taken on different roles with the department. But all along, she's really been the heart and soul of the organization. And over the years, she's taken on different roles with the department, but all along, she's really been the heart and soul of the organization. She is the poster person of a people person. And so we're going to really miss, uh, the role that, uh, Lisa has played with the department and just wanted to acknowledge your contribution. Over the course of thirty years, so.
We were just exclaiming about how there were seals at the Boulder Reservoir when she started.
Yeah, it's amazing. It really was. That might have to do more with her connection to her California past, but. Uh, and just one more, uh, goodbye is that this month is also going to be seeing, uh, Jen Sherry's last day with the department. After twenty two years here, and she's been supporting our GIS and our, uh, informational technology and services area. And, uh. There are many, uh, years when. All of us needed to lean on Jen for everything database related. And so just, uh, uh, help grow that database program, our GIS, GIS program over the years. And. So we're going to miss Jen as well. So the comings and goings of staff at an organization, but we'll miss both Lisa and Jen.
Thanks, Dan.
I think we're done for matters from the staff. Thank goodness.
Thank you. And, uh, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned.